Good evening. Welcome to the June 2nd council meeting of the Oceanside City Council. Before we begin, we have an advisory from our city clerk.
Good evening. We are excited to offer public participation in person at meetings again. Please bear in mind that the council chambers are open with a limited capacity as per the state's guidelines. We will ensure that all persons who wish to speak on an agenda item will be given an opportunity to speak. I will call speakers by name so that you will know when it is your turn. We respectfully request that you exit the chambers once you are finished commenting on your item to assist us in maintaining capacity restrictions. Please follow the guided path to enter and exit the meeting. If you require assistance, please let a staff person know. If you are on Zoom and wish to speak on an item, you must have registered to speak with the clerk's office prior to 4:00 PM. If you are in attendance and wish to speak on an item, please register to speak with one of our staff members in the lobby prior to when public comment is called for the item. If you have material to distribute to council, please hand it to me and I will distribute it to the council for you. And with that, we could do the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Varo.
Mayor Sanchez.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Keim. Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Rodriguez. And Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you very much. And if you would join me, please stand for the invocation. Tonight, we have Pastor Roger Vanderwerken of the Breakwater Community Church.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez and City Council for allowing the opportunity to pray. Glad to see the city still prays. Please join me. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful city. We thank you for the ocean. We thank you for the beaches. We thank you for the mountainous horizons, for the birds, the flowers, the animals, all of those things you have created, and they are stunning. Thank you for the men and women that you've called to positions of leadership in this great city. We ask your blessing upon them tonight. We ask that you grant wisdom. We ask that you grant us as a city to set an example for the entire nation of doing away with the bitterness and doing away with the rancor and doing away with the harsh rhetoric that sometimes has accompanied much of the politics in our land. These things we ask in your name, oh wonderful counselor, mighty God, everlasting Father, Prince of Peace. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. If you would please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Oops, sorry. Thank you very much. And we're going to begin with proclamations and presentations. We have a couple of proclamations this evening, very, very wonderful proclamations. First one is a proclamation in honor of June Pride Month in Oceanside, 2021. If I could please have Max Disposti come down and Lisa Nava, as well as everybody else who's joining them and joining us in this wonderful proclamation. Thank you. Yes, absolutely, yes. And I'm going to hand this other mic to you. It's on, right? Okay. So I'm going to start by reading this proclamation, which I'm so proud to do. Previously, we did some videotaping that will be airing on the 12th to show Oceanside's pride in being part of Pride Month here, as well as with the torch, the passing of the torch. Proclamation in honor of June Pride Month in Oceanside. As we celebrate and declare June as Pride Month in Oceanside, we stand with a lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community in our own city of Oceanside as they declare their own pride in who they are and in who they love. June Pride Month is the birth of pride celebrations. We honor the fight of the LGBTQ community through so many years of demanding acceptance and respect, at great personal risks to themselves. These protests inspired pride celebrations around the world and sparked the LGBTQ civil rights movement in America. While there has been remarkable progress towards equality in recent years, members of the LGBTQ community in the United States and in the world still face unacceptable levels of discrimination and violence. Transgender women of color in America continue to be killed in disproportionate numbers by transphobia, hate, and racist violence, and continue to seek justice. Whereas, the city of Oceanside is a multicultural, diverse community comprised of residents and visitors who come from all walks of life and from all over the world. And whereas, the city of Oceanside promotes a respectful and inclusive environment where all diverse people are respected, included, and celebrated. And whereas, the North County LGBTQ Resource Center was founded in 2008 along with North County Pride by the Beach and has been an advocate for equality and inclusiveness while providing valuable support and lifesaving services in all the North San Diego County region. And whereas, since 2008, the LGBTQ Resource Center has served thousands of people every year through counseling services, LGBT competency training to police, hospitals, and school districts, human trafficking prevention, services for homeless youth and families, veterans and active-duty military support, and so much more. And whereas, healthy and dynamic communities in the United States see LGBT centers as a driving force behind business development, safety, inclusiveness, and pride in our country's heritage and diversity. And whereas, pride events in all cities contribute greatly to the local economy, including businesses, tax revenues, and tourism, as well as create a positive and inclusive image of the city. And whereas, the North County LGBTQ Resource Center founded and has hosted North County Pride by the Beach events in Oceanside every year since 2007, and this year will be held as a virtual event on Saturday, June 12th, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby declare June 2021 as June Pride Month in the city of Oceanside, welcoming and encouraging all North San Diego County communities and LGBTQ families and individuals to virtually come together and celebrate with us on June 12th, 2021. So we do have the executive director of our LGBTQ Resource Center here, Max Disposti, and we also have the director and the driving force behind Pride by the Beach, Lisa Nava. So I'm going to, you have your own.
Yeah. Lisa Nava, she/her/hers. Thank you, distinguished council members and Honorable Mayor Sanchez. As I'm standing here, I am so humbled by your words. A proclamation does send a message to the community, our LGBTQ community, a message of inclusion, that they matter, that they live here, work here, enjoy Oceanside here. And a proclamation is no small task. So we really appreciate the city of Oceanside for continually leading and supporting us with the proclamation. And we ask that we move from the proclamation into action. And every day, Oceanside looks to improve their inclusivity, looks to send messages to their community members that they are affirmed and they are included in every process that we have here in our city. This morning, we were humbled to watch a flag be raised over the city of Encinitas. And again, I just say, it is no small act to show our visibility, to support our LGBTQ community, and to come together around them, to protect them, and give them a vibrant, beautiful city to live in. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I apologize for the back here, but really, there's nothing else to add, Lisa. I think perhaps I definitely recall the history of our pride here in Oceanside. I remember when I came to Oceanside, now close to 19 years ago, at that time, I met Esther as elected official and said, hey, we really would like to do something here, but we don't have the support of anybody. At the time, it was the time when a lot of military troops and service members were hiding because we were afraid to be who they were. And in a city like ours, a military town, full of veterans and service active duties, that was unacceptable for us, along with many other people that were struggling. So I had to say, Esther were there since first day, supporting our journey, trying to understand and being educated, and also opened the doors for the city of Oceanside to be the leading city in North San Diego County in acceptance, equality, and being inclusive. Like Lisa said, this is a step to action. I think that having a city like Oceanside, moving from a 53% equality index to 100%, took the work of our mayor, a council member at the time, the council, the city manager, took the work of everyone, us being responsible to provide services and being accountable for the work we do, is just mind-blowing. So I'm just, a few months ago, a data was showing that our youth between the percentage of 8% to 14% fall within the spectrum of being LGBT in any forms or shapes. And having a place for them to go to create healthy boundaries, build and affirm their own identity is just saving life, literally. We have experienced here in this own room, many years ago, when we came to report that deaths of society, you know, deaths by suicide from many of our youth is not longer happening here in our city because we built a place where people can go to and release their energy and build leadership and empowerment as well. So thank you all for the opportunity, the space, the leadership, and we're here to work with everybody. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So if we could have a picture, you can get a little closer.
We could do that, right?
No, that was, that was something that rolls. Our next proclamation is also very, very important, and it is a proclamation in honor of National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And if we can have Barbara Amador come forward, as well as her other supporters who include our youth. Yes. I'm going to hold, give you this to hold, if that's okay. And youth especially are a very critical part of this proclamation. Unfortunately, our youth has have been disproportionately been impacted greatly. And so this is a proclamation in honor of National Gun Violence Awareness Day, which usually falls on the first Friday in June. So that would be this coming Friday, June 4th. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June 2021 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Oceanside, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we as a country and as a community must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day, more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 230 who are shot and wounded, and on average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas, Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas, California has 3,000 gun deaths every year with a rate of 7.7 deaths per 100,000 people, and California has the 44th highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. And whereas, gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities, with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. And whereas, cities across the nation, including Oceanside, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas, protecting the public safety is a city's highest responsibility. And whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas, local officials and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are the best positioned to understand and how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas, gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than a year of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide, and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. And whereas, in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 4th, 2021, to recognize the 24th birthday of Hadia Pendleton, born June 2nd, 1997, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadia Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas, the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 4th, this Friday, the first Friday in June in 2021, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas, by wearing orange on June 4th, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all that we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, declares the first Friday in June, June 4th, 2021, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Oceanside. I encourage all citizens to support our local community's efforts to prevent the tragic efforts, effects of gun violence, and to honor and value human lives.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez and Oceanside City Council members for declaring June 4th, 2021, National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I'm Barbara Amador, a longtime Oceanside resident and a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America. We are a commonsense gun safety organization, which has grown from one woman at her kitchen table in 2012 after Sandy Hook, to a national organization with over 6 million volunteers today, 6 million. Our local North County San Diego group welcomes anyone. You don't have to be a mother. We are mothers and others. If you would like to join us in our efforts to end gun violence in our communities and in our country, just text the word READY to 64433 to be connected with us. We also have members of our Students Demand Action group here today. And to join them in our students' efforts to fight gun violence, text the word STUDENTS to 64433. As mentioned, the Wear Orange campaign was started by friends of Hadia Pendleton, who was tragically murdered in 2013. Now, eight years later and after hundreds of mass shootings and the over 100 people shot to death in our country every single day, we continue to honor Hadia's memory and the lives of all gun violence victims and survivors. We encourage everyone to wear orange on Friday, June 4th, and tell the world why you are participating. I wear orange in honor of those who have died from and those who have lived through gun violence, and in hopes of my sons and all our futures being free from gun violence. We don't have to live like this, and we don't have to die like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Picture. Well, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention, and thank you for letting us join in this very, very important day, this coming Friday, June 4th. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mullen.
Thank you. We met in closed session at 3:30 to discuss Item 1 on the closed session agenda, conference with labor negotiator on the status of negotiations with the Western Council of Engineers. There's no reportable action under the Brown Act on Item 1. Item 2, conference with legal counsel on existing litigation in the matter of the NRF project owner versus city of Oceanside at all. That matter was discussed. There is no action under the Brown Act at this time to report on Item 2. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. Okay, next is our consent calendar items, which are Items 4 through 26. I understand that we have Item 22 that has been requested to be pulled.
Item 22 has been requested to be pulled. However, the member of the public who's requested to pull it is not in the Zoom session right now. But Councilmember Rodriguez has just pulled it.
Move approval of balance.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please vote. That is to approve the balance of the consent calendar.
There we go. Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 22, which was pulled, is approval of a three-year professional services agreement with Interfaith Community Services to provide homeless case management services in the amount of $234,814 per year and authorization for the city manager or designate to execute the agreement. Thank you. We have Chief Fred Armijo to speak on this item.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. This item is a renewal of our contract with Interfaith for the social workers that are assigned to our homeless outreach team. And this renewal is for an additional three-year period. The clinicians that are assigned to our homeless outreach team provide an invaluable resource to our officers that aid in getting our chronically homeless individuals into services and on a path to being housed. We are requesting approval of this agreement. It's in the amount of $234,000. And it is in part funded through Measure X and existing general fund monies that was budgeted to pay for the program.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Rodriguez.
I would like to request that we postpone the approval of this item in the contract to Interfaith Community Services. We have a current notice of funding availability, as well as an RFP, that will be addressing how we're going to, in a more permanent way, address the homeless crisis here in our city. And I think it's premature to sign on to a three-year contract when we're going to be negotiating and choosing a vendor in the future, and the services will overlap. And so there's no rush. It's not expired until October. Deanna, when will we be reviewing the NOFA and the vendors for the operation of the potential homeless shelter?
Councilmember Rodriguez, Mayor, and Councilmembers, that item will be coming to you at the next council meeting on June 16th.
Correct. So I think that all of this needs to be negotiated so that we can maximize the tax dollars in, you know, dealing with the homeless crisis here in Oceanside. There's still time on the contract. We have until October. Let's negotiate all this together because those responsibilities are going to be overlapping. So I would like to postpone this item, and I'd like to make a motion to postpone this item.
Okay. My understanding is that what is coming to us with the NOFA were actually projects, project-based, not having to do with our homeless outreach team, which is a different program. This is something that the homeless outreach team will be coordinating with respect to giving referrals, but it's not actually taking the place or doing any kind of overlap. It's more of a coordination. Is that correct, Ms. Larson?
Mayor, Mayor, and Councilmembers, that's correct. The items that'll be coming on June 16th are in response to the notice of funding availability to develop affordable housing for homeless persons, as well as the requests for proposals for a homeless shelter operator. This contract, as the chief explained, is for the social workers that are paired with the homeless outreach team, which will be one of the intake ways and one of the ways that we'll be able to connect with people out in the community and then bring them into the shelter. But they will be separate contracts and separate operations.
I read a pass-through memo.
Excuse me. Councilmember Weiss.
Okay, go ahead. I was just interested to see if there was a second to that motion. If not, I was going to make an alternate.
Okay, I didn't see a second to the motion. Okay. I'd like to make an alternative motion, and that is that we pass this, that we approve this staff recommendation. Is there a second to that?
I'll second the mayor's motion. I want to say one more thing. There's a pass-through memo that you passed through to council that has already given staff recommendations to approve Interfaith as the manager and operator on an agreement for the homeless shelter. There's going to be caseworkers on site. There's going to be, there has to be collaboration between everything. It's in the best interest of dealing with this crisis that we don't, you know, approve this, and then approve this, and then approve this. We need to, in conjunction, approve this whole system. And we're at the end of a three-year agreement. It just makes the most sense to do all this together as a part of the same, you know, the homeless outreach team's dealing with homeless, the homeless shelter's dealing with homeless. This makes sense to, you know, work in conjunction, is all I'm saying. So there's a motion in a second, and again, I'm just asking for a little time so that we can negotiate all this together.
There's no other lights? Or did you want to speak?
Are we going to vote on the first motion?
There's a substitute motion, so we can vote on the substitute motion.
Well, Mayor, typically when we have amended motions, you know, if it's materially different than the main motion, we'd vote on the first motion and then take up the second motion.
Okay.
That's how Chapter 2 generally runs.
Okay, let's vote on the first motion.
Two, three, Sanchez, Keim, Weiss, no.
Now on the second motion, which is to approve staff's recommendation.
Three, two, Jensen, Rodriguez, no.
Thank you. We are now on, okay, no general items. Do we have advanced requests to speak? No.
There are no advanced requests to speak.
Okay, do we have a request to speak on items not on the agenda?
We have currently five public comments on items off of the agenda on item number 32.
Let's go ahead and start that.
Okay. Our first speaker is Steve Meschew, to be followed by Dirk Akima, to be followed by Shelley Parker-Taylor. And we're getting Mr. Meschew on the line. And Mr. Meschew, if you can unmute. Again, for those on the Zoom call, we are on item number 32, which is off-agenda items. Mr. Meschew, are you there? If not, we can move on to...
Yes.
Oh, okay. Whenever you're ready, you could start.
Go ahead and put yours in. Hello, my name is Steve Meschew. I'm a member of Save Our Oceanside Sand, and my granddaughter would like to say a couple words. Say something. Please say it.
Please say Oceanside Sand.
We are members of Save Oceanside Sand. The Oceanside Litoral Cell is a member of the overall Southern California coast area. And every year, the Southern California coast loses about 1.4 million cubic yards of sand each year due to the offshore canyons, which include Scripps, Carlsbad, and La Jolla. This was reported by Dr. Gary Briggs and Kinky Patch of the Southern California coast. Once the sand gets into those canyons, it's irretrieved. irretrievable. The canyons are too deep and are amazing protected habitats. The last time Oceanside got real sand was in the 1916 flood, which destroyed many farms, homes, and bridges along the San Lucre River and completely isolated the city for over two weeks. But after the flood, Oceanside had a huge beach, which is much as 150 yards of beach. Since that time, we've moved sand back and forth from harbors and lagoons to beaches. But the bottom line is we continue to lose sand. If our beaches in Southern California received that 1.4 million cubic yards of sand each year, all of our beaches would still look like 1916. Most of the rivers, however, have been dammed since that time or channeled for flood control. So it's unlikely that we'll ever receive sand again as we did in 1916. Yes, the Southern California cities could have all gone together and replaced the annual sand loss, but the numbers are staggering. To replace 1.4 million cubic yards, we would need 140,000 truckloads of sand each year being dumped on the sand on the beaches from Santa Barbara to the Mexican border at a cost of about $42 million a year, just for the sand, not the transport. To have countered the loss since 2016, the cost would have been over $4 billion. That's sort of crazy. The best way of doing it is to keep the sand that we have. How do we do that? Many times over the past 70 years, the Army Corps has recommended hard structures, either breakwaters or groynes. The city has instead opted for short-lived sand fill or an experimental bypass. That sand that we dumped on the beach is long gone now, as is the bypass system. Newport and Ventura Beach installed groynes, and they've worked well in both places. Groynes are used successfully all over the world. If at the end of June, the ongoing sand study again recommends groynes to replace our sand, I ask the members of this council to please support it. I believe it's the only answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Dirk Akima, but he is not in the room. So we'll move on to our next public comment, which is Shelley Parker-Taylor, who I believe is in the room, and we'll get her on right now. If we can.
Yes, good evening. My name is Shelley Parker. And not, drop the Taylor. Anyway, I am speaking for myself. I am a resident of Rancho San Luis Rey. And I would like to say how grateful that I am. I live in a mobile home park, and I am grateful to the City of Oceanside for the rent control ordinance that we enjoy here. I want everybody to know, though, that it is being eroded by investor park owners who are buying the parks, and we are being subjected to management companies who stand in front of elderly and disabled people's homes stating, oh, well, they're going to die pretty soon. We'll buy them, and we'll turn them into current market value, meaning $2,300 a month rent, instead of $500 to $600, which is affordable housing. And this is happening in each mobile home park here in Oceanside. I am happy that the city is focusing on homelessness, that people with good incomes don't have to worry about their home. But we in the mobile home park, the 15 mobile home parks here in the City of Oceanside are dependent on this rent control. And we are slowly losing the battle and losing affordable housing. I am making it my goal to understand how this ordinance was written and see if there is a loophole that can be closed so that we can protect this valuable resource. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Sandy Beal, to be followed by Ellen Bartlett, who is here in person. And we're getting Sandy on? Hi, Sandy. There seems to be a problem with your audio. You sound like a chipmunk. So I don't know if you want to log out and log back in. We could take the next speaker, and then we could come back to you. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much, Sandy. So we'll move on to our next public comment, which is from Ellen Bartlett, who is here in person. I could accept it, and I could distribute it on your behalf.
One of these for each council member, and also when the time comes, there's a lot of these.
I'll take that. All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Ellen Bartlett, and I'm with Preserve Calavera. Preserve Calavera would like to thank all of you for the mayor's proclamation last month in support of our monarch butterfly. We have been working hard to educate our community about these iconic butterflies. On Saturday, May 22nd, Preserve Calavera held a monarch event at Baldurama Park in collaboration with Studio Ace, also from Oceanside area. Preserve Calavera distributed 118 milkweed seedlings and 50 packets of seeds, and Studio Ace gave out 60 butterfly art kits. We hope to see lots of narrowleaf milkweed waste stations sprouting up all over Oceanside. Our thank you gift is a packet of locally collected milkweed seeds with planting instructions for each of the city council members. And on behalf of Studio Ace, we have some butterfly art kits, the same ones that we distributed at Baldurama Park. And so I know Zeb has those, and we'd like to give those... Can I give them out, or do you need to give them out?
I can give them out.
Oh, okay. And there's extra art kits. So if anybody has children, grandchildren, I know Ryan has child, and so does Councilmember Rodriguez, so if you'd like to give some out. And if anybody else, we have extras. If anybody in the audience have one as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you. And we'll go back to Sandy Beal. Hopefully, the audio issues are...
Does it sound better this time?
Oh, you sound marvelous. So whenever you're ready.
All right. Okay. Honorable Mayor Sanchez and city council members, I'm Sandy Beal. Live at Rancho San Luis Rey Mobile Home Park. We have 433 homes, and they're a huge part of the affordable housing in Oceanside. Our affordable housing is being threatened by our predatory park owner, who's only interested in making money. John Saunders is buying up homes as quickly as possible so we can rent them for three times more than homeowners are currently paying under rent control. This is happening in every mobile home park in Oceanside, and now it's happened over 20 times here at Rancho San Luis Rey. Management's been heard to say, quote, "That homeowner will be dead soon, and then we can purchase that home," quote. Rent control for homeowners must become permanent in Oceanside. Mobile homeowners should not be afraid they will lose their rent control by a vote of the city council. There are homeowners here that could never get by without rent control. This is an untenable situation, and it's got to stop. Thank you for your attention to this very important matter.
Thank you. And that concludes the public comment. Dirk Akima is not in the room.
We can call him again later. So let's go to item number 33, which is adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 37, Article 5 of the Oceanside City Code to update the drought response conservation measures, which was introduced May 19th at a last council meeting on a 5-0 vote.
Move adoption.
I need to title, Mayor. This is the adoption of an ordinance of the City of Oceanside amending Oceanside City Code, Chapter 37, by establishing six drought response levels.
Thank you. No lights. Let's vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. We still have 20 minutes until our time-certain 6 o'clock items, which we have four. Let's go to comments from our council members. Anybody wish to make a comment? No? Well, I have a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank the entire, all the residents for the City of Oceanside and your participation in the Wyland Foundation's National Mayor's Challenge for Sustainability. For the first time ever, City of Oceanside came in first place, and that is just so exciting. And that couldn't have happened without a great green team. I call them the mean green team, Oceanside, who have been, they work under the utilities department. And they, you know, it's hand-in-hand water conservation. There were a lot of activities that citizens, residents participated in, got the points by turning in their points. Do we have, is that Ms. Foster? Colleen, is that you? It's not Colleen. Yeah. Come on up and say this. Okay, talk about this. Since we still have a few minutes, and I'm sure you won't take too long, because I know... Colleen. Congratulations, Colleen. Yay!
Huge thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, Deputy Mayor Keim, and council. Congratulations is really due to the community of Oceanside, everyone coming together to get the thousands of votes, and your leadership, and the full city Green O team. We're a phenomenal team of several men and women in the Water Utilities Department. So I'm just one of many that's making a difference in Oceanside. So thank you.
Thank you very much to staff and to the residents, as I said. Thank you. And one other announcement I wanted to make. You know, we are a large city, have a lot of employees, and every now and then, I don't notice that certain people retire. Every one of our employees does such a great job for us, and many, having spent many, many years here. Well, I just, I am very aware that we have one employee who is leaving us tomorrow. Will be her last day, and that's Angie Hanifin, who has been our housing specialist. She's worked for the City of Oceanside over 30 years, all in the Housing Department, and she has really done such a great job for us. So I want to just commend Angie for the phenomenal work that she has done for the City of Oceanside. She is, has been our housing specialist. It is going to be very, very difficult, if not impossible, to fill her shoes. But thank you, Angie. Thank you to the Housing Department for all you do. And I just want to thank her. She's not here, but I want to thank you. So anyway, we do have 17 minutes before 6:00. So I'm going to go ahead, and we're going to take a break and come back at 6:00. Thank you. Okay, it's 6:00.
Recording in progress.
It is 6:00. Time certain for our public hearing items. We do have four public hearing items. Our first one is item number 27. It is our budget hearing. So item number 27 is City Council, CDC, and HDB adoption of resolutions for the following. Number one, approving the appropriation limitation as required by Article 8B of the state constitution as modified by Proposition 111 for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Two, approving the fiscal year 2021, 2022 City of Oceanside operating budget. Three, approving the fiscal year 2021, 2022 Measure X operating budget. Four, approving the fiscal year 2021, 2022 City of Oceanside capital improvements program budget. Five, accepting the annual AB 1600 compliance report and making findings required by government code section 66001 regarding the expenditure of development impact fees. Six, approving the fiscal year 2021, 2022 Community Development Commission operating budget. Seven, approving the fiscal year 2021, 2022 Harbor District operating budget, and approval of a lump sum prepayment to CalPERS estimated at $18.4 million for the city's annual required unfunded liability contribution for both safety and miscellaneous retirement plans. Prepayment will provide an estimated $632,263 in savings, which will be directly applied to the city's CalPERS unfunded liability. I want to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures of council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff and community input during the workshop process.
Thank you. The workshop process also public by some emails.
Staff and workshop and emails.
Staff.
Thank you. And we have a present... Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
The city clerk's office has not received any correspondence on this item.
Thank you. Okay, now we are going to begin with testimony by Jane McPherson, Financial Services Director.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Tonight, we are having the budget hearing. As the mayor went through, we are here to adopt the resolutions as you see listed here, and she read to us. The background, it incorporates all the council direction from the 14th of April workshop that was held this year. It works to maintain our service levels. It includes our CalPERS rates, any changes in that. It has all reserve obligations met. It continues to reflect the council priorities. And important to know that for all funds, not just the general fund, the total appropriations in the proposed budget for 2021, 22 is $546,793,575, with, as you can see, the operating appropriations are nearly $500 million, with CIP appropriations at $67 million. For the general fund, as you'll see, we adopted in 2021, which was a year including the COVID impact, a total revenue budget of $158.03 million and an expenditure budget of $157.71 million, with a surplus of around $300,000. For fiscal year 21, 22, we are back in business. We're proposing revenues of $171.17 million, which includes the three top, which we'll get to, the three top earners are property tax, sales tax, and TOT being the greatest increases. Expenditures are going to be at $170.14 million, with a surplus of $1.02 million. And here are the, you can see the changes between 2021 and 2122. For this next year, it's about $11.2 million just in those three areas. The proposed expenditures, as we indicated in the staff report, we did restore the MNO cuts that we had to make for this current year. Any negotiated changes in benefits or wages, as we mentioned, the CalPERS costs, the reserves, and the surplus is still $1.02 million. During the workshop, council requested the CIP funding be included for restroom at Alex Road Skate Park. So in this budget, it includes, the scope work included restroom and drinking fountain, $400,000 budget requested. And also, it was a revision to the Measure X spending plan for the EMT, the Enhanced Emergency Service Delivery Mall, of $250,000. So in summary, these budgets for all areas represent the spending plan and policy for the next year. They're based on the priorities of council. Even with COVID-19, we are going to have a surplus with, including those increases of which our revenues continue to grow. Unfortunately, our expenses do as well, but it's allowed us to add a few things. We have a balanced budget, and 2122 maintains services while preparing for a bright future. So the recommendation is that the city council, the Community Development Commission, and the Harbor District Board adopt resolutions approving fiscal year 2122 appropriations limit and the operating Measure X CDC Harbor and Capital Improvement Program budgets, adopt a resolution accepting the annual AB 1600 compliance adopt a resolution accepting the annual AB 1600 compliance report, and making findings required by the government code section 66001 regarding the expenditure of development impact fees, and approval lump sum prepayment to CalPERS estimated at $18.4 million for the city's annual required unfunded liability contribution for both safety and miscellaneous retirement plans. Now, the different departments will be going through their particular budgets and provide that information. First up is Measure X.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council Members. Michael Gosman, Assistant City Manager. I'm going to briefly go over the Measure X fiscal year 21, 22 budget. So, as you all know, Oceanside voters approved a half-cent sales tax increase on, on November 6, 2018, that went into effect in April of 2019. Revenues were directed for enhanced police-fire services, improved infrastructure and roads, and homeless assistance. Measure X specified that a citizens oversight committee would be appointed to advise the council and review spending plans, and importantly, that citizens oversight committee endorsed and recommended approval of the fiscal year 21, 22 plan. The Year Three Spending Plan continues to provide for improved public safety services, includes homelessness, and enhanced emergency service deployment model. And then, at the budget workshop on April 14, 2021, City Council authorized a revision for the Measure X Year Three Spending Plan to add $250,000 to the Enhanced Emergency Services Delivery Model, to allow an expansion of hours for the part-time ambulance to improve services. The fiscal year 21, 22 revenue for Measure X is forecasted at $15.1 million. It has, includes a rollover of $5.8 million from 2021, and that is due to higher-than-projected revenues and lower-than-expend-, uh, lower-than-expected expenditures. Total amount available for budgeting is $20.89 million, and total revenues for the life of Measure X are projected at $5.8 million over costs of all projects. These can, these funds can be used in future years to cover capital costs or expand Measure X program funding. The chart you see there is a summer, is a summary of the difference between the Year Two and the Year Three Plan. You can see that the improved public safety services is going up from $4.1 million to $4.6 million, and then we have a lot more going into infrastructure next year, and that's due primarily to the start of a, the Fire Station One. So, for available, as I mentioned, the amount available for Year Three is $20.9 million, with a balance to be carried forward of about $4 million next year. That's what we're projecting. So, Year Three proposed projects, it's continuing, continuing the homeless outreach team, the contract sobering services, the homeless hiring program, we're going to RFP for that, enhanced emergency services delivery model, Fire Station One construction, South Strand Rehab Project, the Beachfront Improvement Project, the Pierview Bridge Rehabilitation Project, the Buccaneer Beach Park Facility Study, and one-time allocations for studies and equipment in the Police and Fire Departments. The spending plan also includes a preliminary plan for expenditures for the seven-year duration of Measure X, that is through March 2026. It anticipates continuance of all of the programs that we have going, including cost escalators and completion of the infrastructure improvements initiated during Year One. The total cost to continue or complete these items is estimated to be about $91 million, which is fully covered by the anticipated revenue. As Jane mentioned, staff is recommending the City Council adopt a resolution approving this budget. I'm going to hand it over to Brian Thomas for the capital improvements project.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Honorable City Council Members. Brian Thomas, City Engineer. We're here to provide our condensed report for the capital improvement projects for the upcoming fiscal year 21, 22. The overview includes the various funding programs, which includes transnet, thoroughfare, and signals, drainage districts, our citywide drainage, SB1, parks, municipal buildings, water, sewer, harbor, Measure X miscellaneous and grant funds. Our current estimated expenditures for the upcoming fiscal year is just over $192 million, with almost $26.5 million in new allocations. The CIP funding includes prior-year carryovers for the continuing projects and new allocations from the designated fund sources. As mentioned earlier, the funding sources include grants, taxes, developer impact fees, enterprise fund, and general fund, as well as Measure X. Some of our major new and continuing projects will be the street overlay and slurry seal projects, Fire Station Number One, beachfront improvements, storm drain improvements, water and sewer pipeline replacements, the reservoir structural analysis and rehabilitation, Buccaneer Lift Station and Buccaneer Force Main Project, the San Luis Rey building upgrades, Oceanside Boulevard Lift Station relocation, the automated meter infrastructure, and Pure Water Oceanside Phase Two. This is a graph of the proposed funding sources. And I guess I'll turn this over to Lindsay for completion of the CIP.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Lindsay Leahy, Principal Water Engineer, tonight to discuss the capital improvement program for the Water Utilities Department. The combined proposed CIP expenditures for fiscal year 21 include $72.8 million for the water utility, and about $55 million for the sewer utility, for a combined total of $127.8 million. The water and recycled water program consists of about 22 existing project accounts, all of which are aimed at increasing our local supply and critical infrastructure reliability projects. Additionally, the department continues to seek alternative funding to offset costs to its ratepayers, and in the last two years, the department has received over $18 million in grants, has entered an agreement for up to $43 million in reimbursements for operational costs of these new projects, and has been selected for up to $150 million in low-interest financing, should it be needed. The projects that are aimed at local supply reliability and local supply development are our lower and upper recycled water program, as well as our Pure Water Oceanside Program, both of which are under construction currently. And examples of projects aimed at our reliability of critical infrastructure include our advanced metering infrastructure, our downtown water pipeline replacements, and our reservoir seismic upgrades and rehab. For the sewer utility, we have 29 existing project accounts, again, aiming at two specific goals of centralizing our wastewater flows and improving and replacing and repairing our aging infrastructure. The two projects aimed at centralizing our sewer flows are our El Corazon Lift Station and Mesa Garrison Force Main, as well as our Buccaneer Lift Station and Force Main. And then, an example of some of the projects aimed at replacing and rehabilitating our aged infrastructure include our pipeline rehabilitation program, our lift station upgrades, as well as our downtown sewer pipeline replacement projects. And as Jane recommended, staff is recommending to the City Council to adopt a resolution approving the 21, 22 CIP budget, and accepting the annual AB 1600 compliance report, and make findings regarding the expenditure of development impact fees. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Carrie Dale, Water Utilities Director, here to present on the Water Utilities budgets. The budgets were developed with the following priorities in mind, as shown here, and as mentioned in the council workshop. For the water utility, we assumed that water use would be flat over the previous year, that the Pure Water Oceanside project would come online at the end of the calendar year, and the revenues in the proposed budget reflect the rate increases shown here on the slide. However, staff is still evaluating these rates and use of rate stabilization funds in lieu of the increases. Staff efforts also are focused around continuing efforts to obtain grant funding. In the, in the water utility, we also have several capital projects that are funded by grants, as well as those shown here for the Loma Alta Slough Wetlands Enhancement Grants. And the operating budget includes $74 million in revenue, almost $14 million in grant funding, for a total of $88 million in revenue, and $63 million in operating expenses. As with the water utility sewer increases were added to the budget, and we are looking at whether to use rate stabilization funds in lieu of the increase moving forward, but the revenues do reflect the 2% rate increase. Staff's efforts, again, also focus on grant funding, as well as readying infrastructure and staffing for the closure of the La Salina Wastewater Treatment Plant, as Lindsay mentioned. Operating revenues are $53.7 million, and, and operating expenditures are anticipated to be $41.5 million. In solid waste and recycling, staff assumed that there was a CPI increase in the Waste Management Contract, and you'll hear about that under a separate item later this evening, that organics rates and charges were included in the budget for commercial services, and new programs associated with implementing organics mandates were included in the operating budget, and again, a focus on grants. The revenues for the solid waste and recycling fund are $31.9 million, with expenses of $31.3 million. And staff is recommending that council adopt all three budgets.
Honorable Mayor, Council Members, Kyle Kover, Public Works Director. I'm going to run real quickly through our harbor operating budget. So, I, this slide shows our revenue projections for the upcoming year. Slip rental, slip rental coming in at just under $5.9 million. That's our, our biggest revenue for the harbor. We have 20 facilities leases that are about $1.4 million. Parking brings in just under a million, and then we have some other minor fees. We have a total revenue of about $8.5 million. Our expenditure, we have maintenance at about $3.1 million. That's to cover all the staff and other, other things. Our police, about $2.5 million. Administration, $1.1 million. The tideland lease is about $788 million. Lifeguards, property management, depreciation of assets, debt service, all totaling to about $8.5 million. Our capital improvement plan, we have about just over $5 million in reserves right now. We're about to finish the J-Dock replacement project, so it's going to take a big chunk out of our reserves. We don't have any CIP planned for the upcoming fiscal year, but we do have some smaller CIP projects the following fiscal years. And with that, staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 21, 22 Small Craft Harbor District operating budget. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. This is a time for the public, if you wish to provide some comments on, on the budget that you have just heard, you can come up to the podium, provide your name, and speak for up to three minutes. See no one advancing? We have no one who is wishing to speak by Zoom, is that correct, Mr. Navarro?
That is correct. No one's registered by Zoom.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing, and go to the dais here for council members wishing to address this issue. Have no lights? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolutions and approve the lump sum payment to CalPERS.
There's a motion on the floor, and now, Council Member Rodriguez.
That's pretty impressive. That, that tells me, in being elected and, and working with our city staff and our city manager, that they've done a phenomenal job of not only updating the public and the council members on every change, every recommendation. I've been on several Zoom meetings with staff all the way up to this point, and so, staff re-reviewing these summary proposals is just another time we've gone over it, and I'm really happy, really satisfied with the, the direction our city is going. I think we're, we're spending money wisely, and I'm looking forward to the next chapter of Oceanside coming out of COVID. So I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second.
Motion approved. Five oh.
Thank you. We're now on item number 28. That is for the City Council, introduction of two ordinances, amending various sections of chapters 13 and 37 of the Oceanside City Code pertaining to water services and solid waste and recycling services. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from council members, and with respect to constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff only. Staff and the public.
Staff.
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 Mr. Navarro, have we had any correspondence on our petitions?
The City Clerk's Office has not received any correspondence on this item.
Thank you very much. Well, then, we're going to go ahead and start our testimony with Ms. Carrie Dale, Water Utilities Director. Good evening, Ms. Dale.
Good evening, again, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. Carrie Dale, Water Utilities Director, here to present on item 28. Staff is recommending that the City Council introduce, introduce two ordinances, amending various sections of the City Code pertaining to solid waste and recycling, as well as water services. As a way of background, updates are necessary due to many changes in the legislation coming from the state, as well as business practices, and to make corrections due to minor issues such as grammar spelling, as well as formatting. And they're proposed both for the solid waste, Chapter 13, as well as Chapter 37 pertaining to water. In Chapter 13, which pertains to solid waste, we have additions that are being added to reflect language associated with food scrap diversion for commercial customers. We've also removed delinquent account and shut-off procedures, which were redundant and already contained in the water code, as well as updated some time when city carts would need to be placed out for service in response to many complaints from residents. In Chapter 37 pertaining to water, the following changes were added. A change of business hours for utility billing and process for deposits. We updated current staff positions, reflected gender-neutral language, which was obsolete. Updated terms used in the water industry. We updated department names, which, which were also obsolete. Updated current business practices, included current permit orders. Also, in this chapter, we had some changes associated with development, and they include clarifying language to determine what fees were included for recycled water services and how those fees were calculated. We also changed the number of residential units from three to four, which triggered certain improvements related to recycled water. We defined when a developer would pay an in lieu fee of construction of those improvements, and defined how fees and credits were issued when upsizing or downsizing meters. This information was also reviewed by the BIA, and we received two thumbs up from them in moving forward. Staff is recommending that the City Council introduce these two ordinances, amending various sections of chapters 13 and 37 of the Oceanside City Code pertaining to solid waste and recycling, as well as water services. I'm here for questions, should you have any.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. This is the time for the members of the public to comment on the presentation that was just given. If you wish to speak, please come up to the podium, and you may speak for up to three minutes. Provide your name, and then you can speak. See nobody advancing? Mr. Navarro, I understand there is no one wishing to speak by Zoom, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the, of public hearing, and come back to the council for discussion and, and our motion. I have no lights. Council Member Rodriguez?
Quick question, since we are, you know, we do this quite often, a state legislative A state legislation passes items, we have to respond. Sometimes that response is just matching the restriction. In this case, are we going above and beyond the restriction or are we just matching what the legislator has set forth with these bills?
We're just matching what the legislation set forward.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendations.
Thank you. That is a motion to introduce the ordinances. Is there a second? There is a second. No other requests to speak. Please vote.
I will need to title, Mayor, sorry. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the City of Oceanside amending Oceanside City Code, Chapter 13, revising miscellaneous provisions in the solid waste and recycling ordinance. Our second ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Oceanside amending Oceanside City Code, Chapter 37, revising miscellaneous provisions in the water ordinance.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, five oh.
Thank you. Next is item number 29. City Council, this is adoption of a resolution establishing solid waste user rates, approval of Waste Management's annual request for consumer price index. That's a CPI adjustment under the city solid waste service contract and direction to staff to implement the user rates and franchise provider charges. I'm going to go ahead and open this portion of the public hearing and request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence. Councilmember Weiss.
Staff. Staff.
Staff and I also participated in a League of California Cities discussion.
Staff.
Staff.
Thank you. So, Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence on our petitions?
No correspondence was received on this item.
Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and start this, the testimony with Ms. Carrie Dale, Water Utilities Director.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Although I would love to do a third presentation, I am going to turn it over to Colleen Foster to provide it.
You're going to pass it on, huh?
To provide it. Do you want to come over here?
Thank you. Ms. Foster, good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Champion.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to present Waste Management's CPI request for adjustments to its rates. Staff is recommending adoption of a resolution establishing solid waste user rates and further recommending approval of Waste Management's annual request for CPI index adjustment to the contractor compensation under the city's current solid waste service contract and to further direct staff to implement the user rates and franchise provider charges. The city currently contracts with Waste Management to provide solid waste recycling and organic services to both our commercial and our residential customers. The current contract expires December 31, 2023. The current contract allows for an annual CPI adjustment. The city council has previously approved CPI adjustments each year from July of 2012 to 2019. The formula within the current contract allows Waste Management to request the CPI. The CPI adjustment is based upon either 100% of the difference in this year's and the previous year's National All-City CPI or 75% of the difference in this year or the previous year's San Diego area CPI, whichever is higher of the two. This year's CPI request is based upon the all-city CPI. That CPI is set at 1.23% and is further reconciled to a rate increase request for 1.42%. In 2019, the city amended the current agreement with Waste Management in order to provide enhanced organic services in compliance with state law. That amendment allowed for a CPI adjustment in January of 2020 with a projected CPI rate of 1.62% applied to Waste Management's portion of the service rates over an 18-month period. We did that in order to avoid a rate increase in January of 2020 and then again a rate increase just six months later. So instead of applying a 12-month rate increase, we applied an 18-month rate increase based upon a projection. The amendment allows for the city and Waste Management to reconcile that adjustment in this current CPI request. That reconciled rate is at 1.42%. In addition to the annual CPI increase, Waste Management is requesting additional service levels for commercial cart services. Basically, these additional service levels will allow our smaller and midsize businesses to have greater opportunity for services and to help mitigate issues with storage capacity. A lot of times, you know, businesses in our city don't have the storage space to store bins and prefer to use commercial carts. So this opportunity provides them with cart service that can be serviced multiple times per week. Staff is requesting approval of these additional service options as they are a benefit to our business community. Residential standard service per Waste Management CPI request will go from $20.17 to $20.44 with a 0.27% per month increase. That totals to 3.24% increase per year for standard residential service. A three-yard landfill bend going one time per week will go from $118.40 to $119.76, representing a $1.36 increase per month to a small commercial customer and overall a 16.32 increase per year. Both of these items were anticipated and included in the 2021 and 2022 fiscal year budget for solid waste and recycling administration. That concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. This is a time for the members of the public to be, to provide us with their comments if they wish to. You can come up to the podium, state your name and speak for up to three minutes. I see no one advancing to the podium, so I understand, Mr. Navarro, that we have no request to speak by Zoom. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and bring it back to the council for comments and a motion and a remotion. I do, in looking at the rates, Ms. Foster, this, these are mandatory requirements with respect to organics recycling that are being incorporated here and this is SB 1383, AB 1826 and AB 341. And in a conversation that I participated in with respect to the League of California Cities, where we're talking about what we could recommend to our state representatives with respect to the $100 billion surplus that the state has even having provided for all reserves that are flush. So I just want to say that there were some comments about requesting to help fund this mandate because I know that these, for anyone looking at the cost of recycling, especially food, organics is what we're talking about, especially restaurants, it is kind of a sticker shock. So Deputy Mayor Keim.
Just like to make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that that is what is being discussed and because this is a first time, perhaps it could ease the pain of beginning this program. There's a motion on the floor. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Quick question, not to beat a dead horse. I mean, we understand a lot of this is just being pushed on us by the state. My question has to do with, and I've asked it before, with certain types of businesses that don't, they're not going to, you know, they're not going to create organics to be recycled or, for example, a lot of the large farmers have reached out to me and go, I have to pay for this, this, you know, item that I'm never going to do just because it's the law now. So what can we do with those gray areas in industries that this is just not appropriate for, but yet they still have to comply?
Councilmember Rodriguez, Mayor and Council, excellent question. I honestly keep voicing up to the state. There is legislation right now that is on the table to push back SB 1383 and to provide funding. We are actively, staff is actively involved in that conversation. And to speak, I think there's a little bit of silence around the agricultural sector. Fundamentally, per the regulation, the agricultural sector has to participate and, you know, subscribe to these services. And I've had conversations with some of our larger farmers and it's a really awkward and difficult conversation. The way we're handling that, we're taking a passive approach. We're not going out there with tickets and, you know, have to set up services. We're taking a passive approach as long as we can per the state. So if that means we don't enforce until the last possible day of 2024, that's what we're going to do, especially for some of these gray areas.
That's exactly what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Is that a second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. There is a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote.
Motion approved, five oh.
Thank you. We're now on item number 30, last item for the evening under public hearings. This is City Council and CDC, introduction of an ordinance amending Articles 4, 4A, 12, 13, and 36 of the Oceanside zoning ordinance, that's ZA 21-00002, and Chapter 7, Article 8 of the Oceanside City Code. An adoption of a resolution amending the local coastal program by incorporating amendment LCPA 21-00002, establishing the amended text as part of the implementing document of the local coastal program, that's the LCP, to remove the medical-only restriction on all cannabis-related facilities that the city currently allows. I'm going to go ahead and open this meeting, this public hearing and request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff, proponents and opponents.
Staff and the public.
Staff and the public.
Staff and the public.
Staff, public.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence on our petitions?
All correspondence has been forwarded to the council prior to the meeting.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go ahead and begin testimony with Stephanie Servantes, Planner 2 for the city.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Stephanie Servantes with the Planning Division and I will be presenting a zoning and city code amendment and local coastal program amendment for commercial cannabis. Staff recommends that the city council introduce an ordinance amending Article 4, 4A, 12, 13, and 36 of the Oceanside zoning ordinance and Chapter 7, Article 13 of the Oceanside City Code, and adopt a resolution amending the local coastal program by incorporating an amendment establishing the amended text as part of the implementing document of the local coastal program to remove the medical-only restriction of, on all cannabis-related facilities that the city currently allows. On March 24th of this year, city council directed staff to bring forward a tax amendment for consideration to remove the medical-only restriction on all cannabis-related facilities. The city previously removed the medical restriction from cultivation only in 2020. The action tonight would remove the medical restriction from manufacturing, distribution, testing lab, and non-storefront facilities. There are no provisions for storefront dispensaries as those are not allowed in the City of Oceanside. The proposed modification will include changes to Article 4, 4A, 12, 13, and 36 of the zoning ordinance. The changes include tax amendments to use classifications and use charts as well as the regulated use article. Cannabis facilities are not allowed in the downtown district, however, it is listed use under the use chart of Article 12, so a modification to that article is needed. The proposed modification to the city code includes changes to Section 7.130, permits The post-sona amendment and related local coastal program amendment will remove the medical-only restriction for existing cannabis-related uses the city currently allows. There are no changes to the types of permitted facilities. There are no changes to the existing caps on cultivation and non-storefronts. The tax, the tax change to Section 7.130 of the city code will allow staff to approve transfers of existing local licenses. This tax amendment will allow existing license holders to make changes to the ownership. If the proposed changes meet all the city requirements, including all new proposed owners must meet background requirements. There are a handful of facilities that have already been granted a regulated use permit by the city council. If those facilities wish to expand their operations to add adult use, they will be required to submit a substantial conformity application to modify their use permit and update or modify their local license applications as well. Staff also has included an attachment to your packet called the Community Benefits. As part of the original local license applications, facilities were required to submit information regarding the benefits the business will provide to the local community. Benefits may be in the form of volunteer services, donations, or financial support to the city. Although cannabis facilities are not allowed within the city's coastal zone, the proposed tax amendment does affect Article 4, 4A, 12, and 36, which are applied citywide and require coastal certification. On May 17th of this year, the item was taken to the Planning Commission for recommendation. After discussion, a motion to recommend denial of the staff recommendation was made. The motion vote was two, two, with three absents. As a tie vote, that motion failed. Planning commissioners who opposed the proposed tax amendment expressed that they would like more information from the Oceanside Police Department. Program changes were occurring too quickly, general opposition to adult use within the city. Planning commissioners who supported the proposed tax amendment expressed the legal operations provide more local control for the city. They asked whether there are any issues with the existing medical-only facilities and they asked how Oceanside compares to other counties. This chart shows cannabis allowances in other San Diego jurisdictions. There are seven cities that allow medical cannabis. Of those, five allow adult cannabis in some form. In the 2020 election, Encinitas voters passed an initiative to allow certain cannabis-related uses and Encinitas is currently proposing updates to that language, which is going to their city council this month in order to be able to start accepting applications. In May of this year, Escondido staff took an item to their city council to receive policy direction to pursue cannabis regulations. City council did not provide any policy direction. The county of San Diego is also currently working on a socially equitable cannabis program. In March of this year, the board directed staff to develop a framework and strategy for the program, prepare sequel analysis for their program, and work with their stakeholders. The cities of Carlsbad and San Marcos do not allow any type of cannabis business. At this time, staff recommends that the city council introduce an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and city code and adopt a resolution amending the local coastal program to remove the medical-only restriction on all cannabis-related facilities within the, that the city currently allows. Thank you and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. This is the time for, to hear from the public, members of the public and I'm going to go ahead and move this over to our city clerk. I understand there are up to 30 people who wish to speak. That includes members that are here in person as well as those on, by Zoom.
That is correct. We have 26, but also this is a public hearing as well.
Right. It is a public hearing. If you wish to speak, this is the time for you to speak. You do not have to have signed up to actually speak. What you would do is come up to the podium, give your name and then speak up to, and then because there are 30-plus speakers, we're going to limit it to two minutes per speaker and this will be controlled by the city clerk. If you are here, that means that, bottom line is, there are three sets of lights on the podium. Please look at them. Green means, you know, that's when you begin speaking. Well, as soon as you speak, the light will turn on and then yellow will mean please wrap up your comments and then red means you're done with your two minutes. So, and we're asking people at home who are, or wherever they are calling, dialing in by Zoom to please also monitor themselves with respect to the two minutes. And I'm going to go ahead and give this over to you, Mr. Navarro.
Okay. We currently have 26 people registered, both on Zoom and in person. As the mayor said, this is a public hearing. If you didn't register, please wait until after. All those that have registered to speak have talked. So we'll move on to our registered speakers on Zoom. on Zoom and in person. Our first public comments from Jeffrey Richmond, but we understand that he is not in the room, so we'll move on to Joshua LaCroy. Was he in the room? Oh, he is. Okay. So Joshua LaCroy is in the room, and we are getting him online, and you're good to go. Whenever you're ready, you could start.
First of all, thank you all, Mayor and the City Council for allowing me to speak. My name is Joshua LaCroy, and I'm the first legal cannabis patient to be transplanted. I received a double lung transplant February 24th, 2018, and quite frankly, the only reason I made it to transplant was due to cannabis low. I had to move from my home on Mallory to pursue transplant. I was first turned down by Stanford for cannabis use, but then I was accepted by UCSD, who then saved my life and believed that cannabis wasn't a problem and wasn't enough to deny me. There are many different ways to use cannabis. I started using FSO, which is full-spectrum cannabis oil, while waiting on transplant. It helped my kidneys. Right away, I had, I had chronic kidney disease, and it, it, it made my kidneys better right away. It helped by allowing me to sleep. I couldn't sleep, and that just made my whole life horrible. I had 16% use of my lungs. So after transplant, I've always been a double, A++ patient. My transplant team says no one has done as well as me. I've actually dropped 12 pharmaceutical medicines thanks to cannabis. I beat medication-induced diabetes thanks to cannabis, and I'm still on the same medications. So yeah, I'm only down to about 11 medications now. Where I started was 23. Patients should have the right to be educated and to have access to all different types of safe, clean cannabis. You know, a lot of people aren't able to get it right now, and that's a problem. I have two teenage children. They know why I use cannabis. It's changed my life. It's healed me. It heals me daily. I am so grateful. Thanks to this medicine and the healing of the plant, I've been able to do so much. Once a month, I run a veterans and patients group in Monterey Park, and where we teach people and advocate.
And that's time, Mr. LaCroy.
I'm sorry?
That's time.
Okay. Thank you so much. I really appreciate you.
All right. Thank you. And we'll move on to our next public comment from Barbara Gordon, who is joining us on Zoom. And Mrs. Gordon, I think you're on.
Thank you very much, City Council, for letting me speak. Again, my name is Barbara Gordon. I'm here to express my concern as the city moves to replace the metapot restriction language to allow marijuana facilities in the city. As the adult advisor to Hispanic youth group, our teams always are watching what we do. We cannot put more drugs in a community and then expect no harm will occur. Since marijuana legalization, the medical community has published thousands of articles related to the harms being seen with marijuana products. According to Dr. Ronov Lev, she is the chief of emergency department at Scripps Mercy Hospital in San Diego. She also chairs Emergency Medicine Oversight Committee with the San Diego County Medical Society, shares her daily experience where the volume of emergency department visits in San Diego related to marijuana has increased 830%. There has been an increase, there has been an increase in public perception, she says, that marijuana is relatively harmless. But the public perception is wrong. Every day, she says, I treat patients with psychosis, anxiety, palpitation, chest pains, all due to their marijuana use. Our emergency departments are facing a psychiatric boarding crisis, as many of these patients are regular marijuana users, whose brain has been hijacked by high content of THC, exasperating their mental health issues. If you move forward to permit more marijuana businesses, I wish you would listen to the health professionals who understand the risk of marijuana policies you are advocating for, instead of listening to the marijuana industry that puts profits over people's health and safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Joe White on Zoom, to be followed by Kelly McCormick, to be followed by Peggy Walker. And I believe we have Mr. White on Zoom, and Mr. White, you could start whenever you're ready.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Joe White, and I'm an Oceanside resident. I've lived here for 20 years. I've been observing how Vista has been doing with their dispensary and their recent change to add adult use to their ordinances. Even without the adult use, they poured in $4 million into the city's coffers. I think if you step back for a minute and just look at what the recent surveys show, it's 91% of Americans believe that marijuana prohibition should end, and cannabis should be legal for either medical or recreational purposes. And this is coming from a new Pew Research Center poll that was released on April 16th, 2021. The survey comes shortly after three additional states, New York, Virginia, and New Mexico enacted adult use legislation. It asked adults to pick between three options: medical use only, medical and recreational use, or it shouldn't be legal at all. 60% favored legal for both. 31% said for medical only, and only 8% said it should remain illegal and criminalized across the board. The survey was released one day after Penni-Piac University published its own poll, and the finding was that national support for legalization has reached a new high point, with 69% of Americans saying that they are now in favor of ending prohibition. Just for information, 5,109 people were surveyed, and the error margin is 2.1% plus or minus 2%. I really feel that Oceanside is missing the boat if we don't move forward on allowing our city to take advantage of, and to support the, our own citizenry, to be able to access cannabis in, in the city. And I think if you've ever gone into a dispensary, you would see how difficult, well, basically how tightly controlled that display room is, and no teenager's going to get in there.
And that's time, Mr. White.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Kelly McCormick, who is here in person, to be followed by Peggy Walker, to be followed by Becky Rapp.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Kelly McCormick, and I am disheartened as a parent and as a health educator to see local officials giving priority to the profits of the marijuana industry over public health and safety. I stand with members of the Planning Commission who said this move is too much too soon, undertaken without sufficient input from the police department or enough data about the impact of the current regulations. Expanding the marijuana marketplace will bring a slew of advertising, further normalizing pot use in the minds of young people who are the true targets of the marijuana industry, no different than the tobacco industry. Thousands of highly-regarded studies affirm the health risks of marijuana use, yet these studies are ignored in the race to cash in on pot. Unfortunately, the societal cost will exceed any hope for tax revenue. For example, in recent years, the number of marijuana-related hospital emergency visits now averaged 29 a day, a significant increase in San Diego County. Pardon me. It's hard to talk in this math. One of the most alarming impacts is the number of young users who experience marijuana-induced psychosis, sometimes accompanied by suicidal ideation or action. Psychotic episodes can continue even after marijuana use has been discontinued, forever changing the life trajectory of the user and their family. Today's unrestricted THC potency levels increase this risk. It is wise for cities to follow the science and remember their responsibility to prioritize public health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Peggy Walker, who is on, I believe, Zoom, to be followed by Becky Rapp, to be followed by David Newman. And Mrs. Walker, you are on.
Yes. Good evening, Council. Thank you for listening. Regardless of polls that were mentioned by an earlier speaker, physicians are increasingly expressing serious concern over the burden marijuana use is creating, especially on children, pediatricians, and the medical and treatment communities in general. I'm here to urge you not to change to recreational language as proposed, and because it's so frustrating, the public has been duped by the marijuana industry. Duped because it's a typical marijuana industry ploy to get a foot in the door with the misnomer, medical marijuana, then to push on to the industry's ultimate goal, acceptance of widespread recreational commercialization. Switching to recreational as proposed means a wider customer base, but unfortunately, greater access by those aged 12 to 27, who suffer the most harmful consequences of use. It also means higher societal, societal, medical, and treatment costs. We should listen to Robert Corey, who 10 years ago authored Colorado's legalization bill, but now deeply regrets it. He admits medical use was a poll-tested tactic to get initial voters' compassionate approval in order to make it easier to move to recreational commercialization. He has issued scathing indictments of the industry he once represented. It's dishonest marketing ploys, it's crony capitalism, and cozy government relationships. "I wish I could be proud of what we did," Corey said, "but it's shameful, hurts people, and Colorado is not safer." Changing to recreational will serve the predatory marijuana industry, but not Oceanside's community well-being. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Becky Rapp, to be followed by David Newman, to be followed by Dwayne Von Itzen. And Mrs. Rapp, you're on, and you could start.
Good evening, Oceanside City Council and Mayor. My name is Becky Rapp. I'm a mother and a youth group mentor, deeply concerned for the safety and welfare of this community. The community is struggling with issues such as how to pay their bills, food insecurities, anxieties, and depression. Recreational marijuana is the wrong message to send to residents. In past years, the city has been clear about their goals and has set a high bar to create smoke and alcohol-free parks and neighborhoods. In fact, it was only a few short years ago that the council unanimously voted to ban smoking in the underpass known as the gateway from downtown to the beach. The city then extended the smoking ban to include Junior Sales Plaza and amphitheater just last year. Has the city's high bar set by themselves regarding public health and safety diminished? The proposal to change metapot to recreational pot is contradictory to the city's goals. You would be sending a message that drug use is for fun to youth and adults. This word change is far more than semantics. It's dangerous, and the primary and most effective way to get high on THC is to smoke it. Extremely high levels of THC, upwards of 95%, are used as waxes and oils are heated up in vape devices. In the staff presentation, six cities were listed that allow medicinal and/or recreational marijuana businesses, and only two were listed as banning them. I'd like to add to the cities of San Marcos and Encinitas, El Cajon, Escondido, Soloco Beach, and many others within, within our county that still have bans on all marijuana businesses. The marijuana industry will try, try to convince you that changing the name will result in an increase of marijuana sales, in turn, creating revenues for the city, but they're ignoring the cost to communities and families. The community is worn down with the homeless and the hopeless. I ask you to leave metapot in its, in place and send a clear.
And that's time. Sorry. Two minutes goes by real fast. We'll move on to our next public comment. David Newman. And Mr. Newman just signed out. If you could sign back in, we'll come back to you. So we'll move on to Dwayne Von Itzen. Oh, David Newman is back in the room. So we'll move on to David Newman, to be followed by Dwayne Von Itzen, to be followed by Carolyn Bolton. And, yes.
Okay, ready?
Just, just a second, David.
Just a second.
Could you please remind people that it's for two minutes?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And for those on Zoom, it is two minutes. Two minutes goes by real fast, and after two minutes, I'll give you about five seconds to wrap up your comments, and then we're going to move on to the next speaker, because we do have a lot of speakers, both here in public and on Zoom, that wish to talk. So, Mr. Newman, whenever you're ready.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, Council and Honorable Mayor. My name is David Newman. I'm an Oceanside resident, a homeowner and business owner. Adult-use cannabis was approved by Oceanside voters with 57% back in 2016, with no doubt that percentage has increased over the last five years. Oceanside residents are currently spending their money in Vista and contributing to their recent $4 million windfall during the 2020 pandemic tax season, while Oceanside government continues its snail-paced progression into the legal market. Granted, Vista required a voter initiative to get the ball rolling, and over the past couple of years, the sky hasn't fallen. Crime has not increased. Children have not died. In fact, I couldn't find any negative effects from their licensed businesses that include 11 dispensaries. It's apparent such a non-issue for the city that just last week, on April 25th, Vista City Council unanimously gave the green light for Vista city staff to draft adult-use ordinance, and at the same meeting also agreed to reduce its permit fees, making it less of a burden for, to their new market, and certainly shows how they are embracing what was once considered taboo. Some research into San Diego's adult-use market opened since the passage of Prop 64 yielded about the same as Vista, garnering a whopping $8.2 million in 2019, with little criminal issues to speak of with regards to the legal market, but a few arrests and crackdowns on the illegal dispensaries. At the last Planning Commission meeting, Commissioner Custer said that it's not the city's responsibility to make it easier for any business to compete with the illegal market. I found her statement to be uncaring and unbelievable, to say the least. I am of the opinion that it is indeed the city's responsibility to protect our citizens from illegal activity, which is why the city.
And that's time, Mr. Newman.
Oh, wow, that's quick.
Yeah. Two, two minutes goes by real quick. Thank, thank you for your comments. We'll move on to Dwayne Von Itzen, to be followed by Carolyn Bolton, to be followed by Elizabeth Holmes. And Dwayne, whenever you're ready.
Hello, Mrs. Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Dwayne Von Itzen. I'm an honorably medically discharged veteran of the Army. I'm here to speak tonight in hopes that you understand how important it is to support this measure. Ironically, on the same day that the council decided on May 17th to not pass this measure, the DEA opened up research for the first time since 1968 on a measure that was first put in act in 2016. And it's important to understand that when they take the time to recognize that, just as a community like Oceanside, who is as ahead of times with the rest of the country as they are, by supporting such things as Pride Month and gun awareness measures, you should clearly understand the importance of access for veterans and all community members, but veterans specifically, which make up a large portion of the people that visit and reside in the area, be they active duty or retired prior service. So I urge you to support and do the right thing. And I would appreciate knowing that my brothers and sisters have access to the medication they need, because all use of cannabis, whether you decide to recognize it or not, is a medicinal benefit, and there's a reason for that, that the federal government has patent number 613500.
And that is time. Thank you. Our next public comment is from Carolyn Bolton, to be followed by Elizabeth Holmes, to be followed by Ken Dolby. And Mrs. Bolton, you could start.
Hi, Honorable Mayor Sanchez, Deputy Mayor Kim, and distinguished council members. My name is Carolyn Bolton, and I'm a District 3 resident, homeowner, and a small business owner here in Oceanside. I'm here to urge you to vote yes on incorporating this amendment to remove the medical- to remove the medical-only restriction on all cannabis-related facilities. Once again, we have been told by folks outside our community that this legalizing adult use of cannabis leads to more use for adolescents. The CDC has reported in their Trends in Adolescent Treatment that numerous studies, including those published in the Journal of Adolescent Health, JAMA, Peter Aktus, which is a monthly peer-reviewed medical journal published by the American Medical Association, actually shows a sharp decline in the numbers of teens being admitted to drug treatment programs for marijuana-related issues despite the spread of legalization. Admissions dropped from nearly 60% per 10,000 in 2008 to 31 per 3,000 in 2017. It's a reduction of almost nearly half. I would encourage the mayor and the city council members to visit a licensed dispensary and see for yourself, if you haven't already, how secure these facilities are and that minors are not able to gain access. However, if we don't have specific legalization strategies that hamper the black market, then adolescents and kids, that black market's going to flourish. So incorporating this amendment to remove the medical-only restriction on all the cannabis-related facilities is a step in the right direction. And I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Elizabeth Holmes, to be followed by Ken Dalpe, to be followed by Nick Ritchie. And, Mrs. Holmes, you could start.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Elizabeth Holmes. I'm a D1 resident at 301 Mission Avenue, and I have lived in Oceanside for over 40 years. You may hear that cannabis use costs society more money than alcohol, which is not found in any study. Though there is a study by the World Health Organization on health and societal consequences of cannabis compared to alcohol and other drugs, which concluded the overall risks associated with cannabis are small to moderate in size and unlikely to produce public health problems comparable in scale to those currently produced by alcohol and tobacco. You no doubt will or have been told that cannabis leads to use of more drugs. According to the National Academies of Science, Engineering, and Medicine, a report in February 2017, there's no substantial link of cannabis and any other illegal drugs having cannabis lead to those. If someone's stating differently, they should bring forth evidence. I heard a lot of talk around numbers and things like that, but nobody's saying where those numbers came from. Please work to differentiate fact from opinion, feelings, and scare tactics. Look for the proof. What studies are they referencing in their statements? Please vote yes to remove the medical-only restriction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Ken Dalpe, to be followed by Nick Ritchie, to be followed by Suzanne Hume. And, Mr. Dalpe, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I rise to speak in favor of the city council pursuing these measures in terms of increasing the use and sale of marijuana here in Oceanside. I would like to state that in a free and open society, which is in fact the United States of America and here, of course, in Oceanside, that adults have the opportunity and the right to pursue their interests as they see them, even if those pursuits may result in a harm or some kind of downside. And certainly, we can see there's evidence that use of alcohol can produce a downside. Cigarettes and gambling all have their downside. However, that does not mean that the state has the right to preclude adults from pursuing these interests. The state does have the right to regulate these pursuits, to protect young people, people with limited capacities to make correct decisions and so on and so forth. And we're all in favor of that. However, to merely say that adults who have-- who have, in the past and for many years, used cannabis, to not be able to pursue that interest legally is, I think, counter to a free and open society. I would ask the city council to understand that this is also a freedom of choice by adult individuals, and that freedom of choice should not be curtailed by either the Oceanside City Council, the San Diego County, the state of California, nor the government of the United States. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Nick Ritchie, to be followed by Suzanne Hume, to be followed by Christine Russell. And, Mr. Ritchie, you are on. Are you unmuted? Oh, Nick, you muted yourself. So we're going to send you another request to unmute yourself?
Right.
All right, there you go. All right, you're on.
Looking for that request.
Oh, no, you're good. You're good.
Oh, okay, great. Okay, city council members and mayor, good evening. Thank you very much. It's great to be here, and thank you very much for your service. Maybe it's me, but our 1985 local coastal plan doesn't seem to have anything to do, nor should it, with recreational or medicinal marijuana. So, please, vote no. I would just like to encourage you to direct our staff to spend more of their time on analyzing our local coastal plan as to what items strengthen our ability to replenish and protect our beaches, to assure that these items remain in our local coastal plan. Last week, during a high tide event, I watched my neighbor's backyard get destroyed near Buccaneer Beach. A married couple in their 80s on a fixed income, they applied for an emergency permit to protect their new home from the Coastal Commission. They were immediately denied. So now, their home will slowly be destroyed. One of the Coastal Commission's mission statements is to protect private and public property. They clearly are violating that with this elderly couple. And also, they're supposed to maintain beach access. I ask you, how can the Coastal Commission have authority when no beach exists south of Buccaneer now? There's nothing. Low tide, high tide, it's all wet sand, if anything exists. Upon its creation in 1972 and into the next decade, the Coastal Commission was a champion for our beaches. Now they appear to be actively promoting the destruction of our beaches. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Suzanne Hume, to be followed by Christine Russell, to be followed by Catherine Levasur. And Suzanne?
Hi, everybody. Okay, hi, everybody. My name is Suzanne Hume. I'm the educational director and founder of CleanEarthForKids.org. And before I comment, I would like to publicly thank and congratulate Nathan Mertz and the Oceanside Department of Public Works for not using pesticides in our Oceanside parks since we passed the IPM in March of 2020. Your commitment to protect kids and our parks will be forever remembered. And thank you so much to Mayor Sanchez and Deputy Member Keem for your concerns about toxic pesticides in our city and those being used by West Coast tomato growers--
Crowe, Bob, Ashton.
I'm sorry, someone spoke, so I'll go ahead. So I'll start again, if that's okay, or continue where I was?
I paused your time, so you could continue.
Oh, okay. Okay. Sorry about that, everybody. So I would like to say thank you to Mayor Sanchez and Deputy Member Keem for your concerns about toxic pesticides in our city and also those used by West Coast tomato growers where I was poisoned and being used by Mission Vista High School. Only 15 pesticides are banned in the U.S., when 51 are banned in China and 175 in the UK. So is the cannabis we're discussing going to be grown with pesticides? In California, because it's legal, some other pesticides are used. Just because it's legal does not make it safe. Tonight, we're asking for a specific plan to keep cannabis out of the hands of youth. This comment is not about medical marijuana. This comment is about our children, our health, our community, and research showing that cannabis and THC products containing-- or containing THC are directly marketed at youth and youth of color. This is a social, racial, and environmental justice issue. And both cannabis smoke and Delta-9 THC are known for health hazards listed under Prop 65 as a carcinogen since 2009 and 2020, respectively. The youth we've spoken to are unaware. They think that cannabis is good for them. This is because of marketing and a lack of education. And we're really concerned about cannabis use by pregnant women because of the exposure to Delta-9 THC can affect the child's birth weight, behavior, and learning ability. THC goes through placenta barriers, and studies show that cannabis is in the fetal blood within 15 minutes of use. So we're very concerned about this, and we understand that in the staff report, there was talk of money for the city.
And that's time, Mrs. Hume.
Okay, thank you so much, and we would encourage a no vote on this. Thank you very much.
Our next public comment is from Christine Russell, who is here in person, to be followed by Catherine Levasur, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that last name, to be followed by Lexi Gowdy. And, Mrs. Russell, whenever you're ready to start.
Hi, good evening. I'm a stage-four cancer patient. I'm a disabled combat veteran, former naval officer, engineer, math, and science teacher. I've resided in Oceanside for about a year. Before that, I was in the city of Carlsbad for about a year. This statement is in support of keeping the medical restriction in place to protect medical patients. This is what I've experienced personally in the cannabis industry here in San Diego County. For the past two years, it has gotten worse to acquire medical products because it doesn't sell on the shelves due to cost. When, 2018, when it first hit the market, the dispensaries that solely used to be medical dispensaries carried a lot of options. And then slowly over time, it has been less and less, and you see a lot less of what I consider to be quality. Right now, I can only find what I use in March and Ash, and they stopped carrying some of the stuff I use recently. The cost has become a serious barrier and has gotten worse. They just keep stocking the shelves with a lot of flour. And I do agree with the previous folks how it's become a problem with the smoke and impacting your safety because I lost my home in San Diego because of smoking cannabis. My neighbors, it was a no-smoking property. That is why I moved to Carlsbad and then relocated to Oceanside because you guys have this medical restriction in place. It really has changed the environment the last two years. Leib Ostrow, the founder of CBD Alive, he agrees with me that this should be still moved to selling out of medical clinics and to actually shut down the dispensaries because of what's going on. The cost keeps going up. And thank you for your time. Have a great day. Bye.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Catherine Levasur, to be followed by Lexi Gowdy, to be followed by William Moore.
Hi there, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you in advance for your valuable time. A dear friend of mine is a successful San Diego small-business owner. She's an exemplary example of what we all want to community member. She recently reached out to me, asking to see where she could find a high CBD, low THC product with her neck pain. I gave her a list of recognized and licensed facilities in her area of North County and that they had the perfect product for her. I explained to her, she first needed to purchase a medical card in order to purchase with those establishments. She thanked me and went on her journey to get the medicine. Less than two hours later, she reached back out to me, very proud of herself, and said, "You don't need a medical card." She explained to me, she just called a delivery service. She found it in a local magazine, and they brought the tincture to her with no medical card and no tag. My friend had gotten the medicine from an illegal service, and she had no idea what she was doing was wrong. Her neck pain is already significantly better. However, Oceanside did not get the tax dollars from that transaction to help our roads and schools. She now leads a better quality of life. However, she-- An illegal delivery service who is not enforcing the rules got her business. And one thing you can count on is the illegal delivery service will not be turning in those tax dollars to you, our city of Oceanside. I could spend all evening telling you stories just like this. Keeping cannabis-- Cannabis is here, and it isn't going anywhere. Keeping medical greenlights the black market, and the black market is full of unsafe cannabis. Please vote yes. Oh, and then also, my four-year-old nephew had a stage-four neuroblastoma. They said we were going to lose him, and he is now a survivor of stage-four cancer because of cannabis medicine. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Lexi Gowdy, to be followed by William Moore, to be followed by Anna Overall.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lexi Gowdy. I am the Assistant Office Manager for MedLeaf Delivery. I addressed the council back in March and shared how myself and many other people lost their jobs due to the COVID pandemic and how that led me to seek employment with MedLeaf. Since last June, I have gained more than a job. I became part of a thriving and positive community-- excuse me, a community that is trying to evolve from the outdated and unrealistic stereotypes that are unfairly cast upon us. This community has had many positive impacts on many more lives besides my own. My husband works for one of your licensed cultivation farms in Oceanside, and we are both dedicated to improving the lives through plant medicine. Many of my colleagues are veterans, and the ownership team I work for is diverse and women-led. Going to work every day, we both witness the pride and joy within each and every one of our coworkers. I want more people in the city of Oceanside to have that feeling. Granting adult use will provide more job opportunities that will ultimately make people happy. Council members, you have that opportunity to provide that to your community. Please vote yes and success forward the plan for adult use in Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from William Moore, to be followed by Anna Overall, to be followed by Nellie Rogers. And as I call your name, feel free to line up behind the person, and that way, we could get through as many speakers as we can. And also, your names will be up on the screen as well. Mr. Moore, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Oceanside City Council members. My name is Willie Moore, and I would like to address agenda item 30. I am a USMC combat veteran, and I have significant service-connected disability history that includes PTSD, depression, anxiety, chronic back pain, and other unprovoked stressors on an everyday basis. I am also an employee of MedLeaf Delivery. MedLeaf, being a veteran-owned company, has offered me a unique career opportunity, and I'm happy to be working in the industry that will change the lives of so many veterans I know here in Oceanside and abroad. After being discharged honorably, I know that my initial fear of discussing cannabis and its potential effects to my VA doctors or fear of not being treated or taken seriously is shared by many, many veterans here in Oceanside. This led me to go through years of unsuccessful therapy, medicine trials, a large number of daily prescriptions, with numerous medicine changes to the point that I was taking 12 to 14 pills a day. Although the medicine helped my mental health at times, it was extremely unhealthy for my liver, my kidneys, and my heart. It took a few years and thoughts of suicidal ideations that I finally realized that I was worse off than before I started treatment. It was not until I was employed through MedLeaf that I truly became educated on the deep-rooted medicinal benefits of cannabis. Adult use of cannabis not only offers a means of recreational use to our huge tourism population, but more so the veteran community. Others-- and it gives others opportunity to purchase cannabis without being put into a medical system that could affect their federal government or VA benefits. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Anna Overall, to be followed by Nellie Rogers, to be followed by Gracie Morgan. Again, as I call your name, please come on down, and we do have markers to ensure social distancing. Mrs. Overall, whenever you're ready.
Hello, Oceanside Council. My name is Anna Overall. I am an employee at MedLeaf Delivery, and I manage our community outreach. Since opening in July, we have successfully held numerous community events in Oceanside. Some of these events we have held over the last 10 months include the following. Our first-ever donation drive was held in November for the Veterans Association of North County, where we helped donate and distribute over 600 turkeys and meals for local veterans on Thanksgiving during the pandemic. Our next donation drive, we worked with Got Your Back San Diego, where we provided over 300 meals to children in need around San Diego County. For Christmas, we helped out our furry friends over at San Diego Humane Society, where we donated food, toys, and other needs for the animals at the Oceanside campus. After the holidays, we wanted to help our immediate neighborhood-- After the holidays, we wanted to help our immediate neighborhood, and we successfully held our first Oceanside Neighborhood Cleanup. Myself and 20 other volunteers from neighboring business and outreach programs gathered trash and debris in Oceanside's industrial complex and had it professionally discarded from the neighborhood. Our most recent community collaboration was with Humanity Showers, a local nonprofit organization, where we raised money to help bring basic hygiene needs to homeless population of Oceanside and San Diego County. And we are planning a, our next outreach is going to be an Oceanside Beach Cleanup at the Harbor, scheduled for June 16th. We'd love to see you there, if you can make it. I am in favor of adult use to allow for better education on legal cannabis and to continue to grow our community efforts and help improve our city through community outreach programs, cleanups, and education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Nellie Rogers, to be followed by Gracie Morgan, to be followed by John Byram.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Nellie Rogers. As a veteran wife, I am happy to see cannabis come to Oceanside, and I know that it would benefit more people to understand the difference between legal and illegal cannabis. We need more public education, and having adult use would help to eliminate the number of illegal operators in our city. I urge you to please vote yes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Gracie Morgan, to be followed by John Byram, to be followed by Madison Matea.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council members. I appreciate your time. Your leadership and guidance has led us here, and we thank you for addressing this proposed ordinance change per the Planning Commission's recommendation. I have adjusted what I was going to be speaking on tonight to meet the two-minute time limit. I do hope that I see it through. The cost is simply too high for us to ignore this as an issue. In the past couple of hearings, I have heard the cries of the public commentary, speaking to odor mitigation and mainly to the youth having access to cannabis. I wanted to give everyone on public record an idea of what it takes from seed to sale and what that means. I will now go ahead and do that for you guys. So from seed, then the plant is then tagged with a unique identifier. It is sent for a record, recording, trim, waste, and harvest, where they combine the plants into packages that are then sent to manufacturing facilities, where they are created detailed transport manifests, and they transfer packages to another business, being a lab, where they then go for recording package test results for pesticides, microbial, additives, and THC and other cannabinoid content. From that lab, they are sent to manufacturing, where they are put into packages that are child-resistant, odor-resistant, and also tamper-evident. From those manufacturers, they are sent for a recording final sale information with retailers like ourselves, MedLeaf Delivery, a non-storefront retailer that is legal here in Oceanside. I also, tonight, will pass these off. We do have actual lab result tests, so that you guys can take a look at what that looks like. I'm not sure that that has been provided to staff prior to this, but I am happy to hand these over and offer that up, so that you can see the kind of lab testing that is being done in the legal cannabis market. This is not happening in the legal cannabis market, which very much so continues to flood our city as we turn a blind eye to adult use being something that is a viable solution. We do see ourselves as a solution, and I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from John Byram, to be followed by Madison Matea, to be followed by Alma Cuevas. If you want, you can lie it down. Our Assistant City Clerk will help you out there. But you could, you could speak.
Mayor, Council members, currently only two cities in North County permit marijuana businesses, but we all are impacted by marketing, promotion, and billboards on radio and direct mail. It is unconscionable that three years into recreational sales of marijuana, the state has not developed any system to make sure marijuana is not sold to minors. We see, you can see from this chart that during the pandemic, ABC did operations, and almost 80% of individuals of the alcohol businesses failed. Meanwhile, the State Bureau of Cannabis Control is in the process of reorganizing, remains focused on increasing the number of licenses. They have not yet conducted a single delivery decoy operation, nor has any law enforcement agency in San Diego County, as we can find. We urge the jurisdictions in the region to delay any expansion of marijuana businesses until the recognition, reorganization is complete, and enforcement and compliance checks, protocols are developed and implemented to conduct regular operations with licensed retail, delivery, and illicit markets to prevent sales to minors. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Madison Matea, to be followed by Alma Cuevas, to be followed by Carmela Munoz. And you could start.
Mayor Sanchez and Council members, March 28th, 2018, I stood right here in the council chambers as a freshman, just a few weeks after my club met with Mayor Weiss and provided 300 signed postcards from residents who opposed the marijuana industry. Then you voted in our favor and rejected sale of cannabis. I was also here when Left Post Extracts gained its manufacturing license, despite the individual meetings we had with each one of you to inform you about its negligence. Since then, it has used marketing that makes marijuana look like the next greatest fad, appealing to the youth who are the future of this city. It has been clear the entire time where this path was leading, and as it seems to continue, more residents will be enticed to fill the holes in their lives with a substance that will never bring them fulfillment, but will contribute to their depression, decrease their productivity, and increase their chances of falling into usage of other dangerous drugs. My name is Madison Matella, and I am president of the Be the Resistance Club at Oceanside High School. After four years and 500 hours of service, I will be graduating next week with honors. I will not just be speaking for myself, but for my entire school in saying that we are betrayed by this council. Since 2017, we have met with you repeatedly, opened up to you about how our peers are becoming addicted, and you have told us to collect more data, that if more businesses are open in Oceanside, then more money can be collected to help youth stop using. This is a lie we've seen before from big tobacco, and marijuana is no different. The money you might reap from opening new businesses will not come close to making up for the increased harms that will come from more use and addiction. Please remember that you do not report to marijuana businesses, you report to your people. I believe that you can make the right decision tonight. It just matters if you do too. And if you don't, all I ask is that when the time comes, when you notice those more addicted men and women on the street, when cannabis advertising billboards surround our roads, when marijuana becomes the reason people flock to Oceanside, when more youth begin vaping, remember the 17-year-old girl standing here pleading against recreational marijuana for the sake of the youth. It's never too late to change your mind, to rewrite what could be a huge mistake. Be the kind of leader who's not afraid to stand up to the bullies in society. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Alma Cuevas, to be followed by Carmela Munoz, to be followed by Erica Leary. And again, please line up. We do have some markers on that row over there. And Alma, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, good evening, City Council members and Mayor Sanchez. I am here today to share my personal experience with marijuana. I have been a victim, not directly, but indirectly, by my family, my personal family. I have a cousin who uses marijuana for medical uses. It has not helped, as he has been increasing his doses and has moved on to other substances. There are statistics that show that, that show this. I will be using Oceanside Unified School District CHIC's 2019 survey. As they have, 11th graders have reported, 16%, 16% of 11th graders have reported use of marijuana compared to, wait, 19% of, sorry, 19% of 11th graders have reported the use of marijuana compared to those of 16% who have used alcohol. This is compared to 41% of non-traditional students. Just imagine how much that will change in a couple of years if you guys vote yes. Please vote no, because this cannot be continued. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Carmela Munoz, to be followed by Erica Leary, to be followed by Gina Austin.
Good evening. My name is Carmela Munoz. I have been working in alcohol and drug prevention for over 20 years with both youth and adults, some of which live in the Eastside and Crown Heights neighborhoods in Oceanside. In all these years of working in prevention, I have never heard any adult or youth express a desire to have marijuana businesses come to their community. On the contrary, the community always feels devastated to see the proliferation of alcohol, marijuana, and other drugs in their, in their neighborhoods and their city. I have heard city officials argue in favor of adopting policies to allow, to allow businesses to open in these cities to create jobs in the name of social justice. But what I have heard from the community is that we need justice in housing, education, jobs, wages. We need sustainable jobs in the community. I feel minorities are being used as pawns in the proliferation of marijuana, and the only benefiting is the marijuana industry. Many youth and families from Oceanside, including the Eastside and Crown Heights, have already affected by drug abuse and poverty, and adding marijuana for adult use and recreation will only make these problems worse. I have, worse. I have a youth meeting yesterday where youth expressed that one of their concerns was how easy it would be for youth to access marijuana products. Many of the youth I work with want to become nurses, teachers, doctors, invest in our youth and families before pleasing the marijuana industry. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next public comment is from Erica Leary, to be followed by Gina Austin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I hope I can explain all this in two minutes. I don't really have prepared comments, just a few additional things to share. First off, I am donating this either for your own reading pleasure, or perhaps to the City Library, a copy of Smokescreen that was recently released by Kevin Sabat, founder of Smart Approaches to Marijuana. They actually used my Amazon review to promote their book, when I wrote that for anyone who roots for the truth and condemns corporate greed in tales such as The Insider, addressing tobacco, Aaron Brockovich, PG&E, Dark Waters, DuPont Chemical, and others like Purdue Pharma. Perhaps you've watched Prime of the Century on HBO. I'm in the process of finishing that up myself. Smokescreen provides an insider's preview for the movie that will likely be made in 20 years. Tonight, you have the opportunity to take a prevention approach and not take 20 years to address the growing marijuana problem. We've heard from local businesses. I encourage you to use that QR code to find examples of how Oceanside's businesses are targeting minors, and even MedLeaf sends direct mail to residents throughout North County. My colleague, who has three young children, got that mailer in the mail, looks like Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, that says happiness delivered to your door. If you have a 16-year-old in your house that goes to get the mail, what do you think they think when they see such language? On behalf of the North Coastal Prevention Coalition, I'll give, pass out these documents urging a public health approach to marijuana. Regardless of your decision, there's lots of public health measures that are seriously lacking, including decoy compliance checks, advertising restrictions, potency, and the list goes on that I'll hand to you. Thank you.
Thank you. And then our next public comment is from Gina Austin, who, there was an issue with her email, but she's on Zoom. So we'll move on to Mrs. Austin, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Gina Austin, and I am a land use attorney in San Diego that represents a large portion of the licensed cannabis industry. I want to add some recent information to Ms. Sivante's report on local municipalities. On May 24th, Lemon Grove passed adult use at its Planning Commission hearing, and that will be moving to City Council and is expected within the next 30 days or so. So there are additional jurisdictions that are moving into adult use. In addition, the opposition attempts to scare you to deny this code change because of potential teen use, without evidence of actual use, as many speakers have spoken to. It is important to note that medical-only is available to 18 years and older, while adult use is only available to 21-plus. And we have seen many retail outlets throughout the state, including San Diego Recreational Cannabis here in San Diego, that only sell to 21 and over. And that may be the moving trend, and you'll need to be there. This use, adult use, has been approved for cultivators, and that same right and privilege should be given to the rest of the cannabis industry. There's simply no difference between the cannabis that is sold for adult use and the cannabis that is sold for medical use. There are products more frequently used by medical patients, but there is no difference in the cannabis that is used to make that medical product. We encourage you to support staff's recommendation and approve the amendments as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes the registered speakers, but this is a public hearing.
Yes, this is a public hearing. Are there any other requests to speak? Please approach the podium, give your name, and then you have two minutes.
Okay, I'll be fast. My name is Karen Tomlinson. Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and City Council member. I'm a terrible public speaker, so bear with me. My name is Karen. I'm 39. I'm college-educated. I run a successful real estate company, and I own MedLeaf, and I partake in cannabis. Most adults who partake in cannabis are just like me. They're professionals, CPAs, veterans, nurses, lawyers, hairstylists, restaurant servers, moms and dads, et cetera, all over the age of 21, all with legal rights to possess and partake in cannabis. In my, it's my company's duty to provide safe access to lab-tested cannabis. Our employees are all OPD and live-scanned, background-checked. When you call in, we identify your state ID. We double-check your state ID when we show up at your door to make sure that for safety assurance that we are giving it to the right person of 21 up in legal age. I am from Oceanside. It's no secret that there is an illegal cannabis market here, and has been ever since I was a child. So where I respect the opposing comments, I've yet to hear a solution. Why, I have two questions. Why would you not want to choose regulated access to adults in Oceanside? Why would they want to keep these illegal outlets thriving in our city? I urge you to vote yes for safe cannabis. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any other requests to speak? One more, come on, come on up, come on down, excuse me, to the podium, give your name, and you have two minutes.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Council members. My name is Eli Azinura. I own a CBD shop in town, and the majority of my customers are 40 and over. Anybody's welcome to come and, you know, check me out and ask any questions. One thing that a lot of people forget is the black market is very dangerous for kids. We can't stop kids from, from buying it, the black market. A lot of these black markets, a lot of these drug dealers lace their stuff with fentanyl, and they only need a little fentanyl, and these kids are smoking it, thinking they're getting high from cannabis, but they're really getting high from the fentanyl, and that's when they're overdosing. So maybe if we did regulate it, and we could put the black market out of business, it would be a lot safer and better for our community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Give your name, and you've got two minutes.
My name is Mitchell Matella. Just a few years ago, cannabis was just allowed for medical use here in Oceanside. It was allowed for medical use, and back then, it was said that it was only for medical use, and it was for medical purposes with science-based reasoning behind it. However, back then, I and many other people in Oceanside advocating against it, knew that it was just a ploy to further advocating for widespread cannabis use among all people. it was just a ploy to further advocating for widespread cannabis use among all people. And so, as this day comes, it is clear that this was the case, and it was never the truth, that it was always for medical purposes and science-based. Then the point that others say that legalizing it for everyone would decrease the amount of illegal activity and illegal sale of this is just not true. If you allow more adults access to cannabis, and you don't need a medical permit or a medical reason to get cannabis, then more people will be accessed to cannabis and be able to sell it to minors. The notion that people will have less access and the illegal market will be less active if we legalize it for everyone is just false, because if more people have initial access to it, then more people will be able to sell it to others on the black market. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We do have two individuals on Zoom that are raising their hands wanting to speak. It's not our procedure to do that, but just wanted to get the consensus.
That's fine. That'll be the last. No one else in the council chambers wishes to speak? Okay, so these will be our last two then?
So we are going to ask them to unmute themselves, and we'll go ahead and spotlight.
Do you have a couple of names? Do you have the?
Joan Bowman?
Balbuena.
Balbuena, I apologize.
Okay.
All right, you could go.
Hi, my name is John Balbuena. I am a U.S. Navy vet, and I can sit here and talk to you about how cannabis helped me cope with some of the things that are unique to veterans. But I'll give you a little bit of a history lesson. Cannabis and the prohibition of cannabis is actually based on racist and racism, a racist agenda. So most people who are for the, you know, for any type of prohibition from denying individuals the access to cannabis are actually supporting a racist agenda. Before cannabis was prohibited under this racist agenda, it was medical, it was used for medical purposes in America. I mean, it was grown by presidents. Our Constitution was written on cannabis-derived material. So we're sitting here and arguing over something that was actually used for medical purposes without a requirement of a recommendation. So if we really look at the facts, cannabis should have never been in the Schedule I substance list. Why? Because number one, in order to be in this list, a substance has to be highly addictive. It has to be dangerous to use without a doctor, which obviously none of those apply to cannabis, and it has to have no medical benefits. And neither of those, none of those characteristics apply to cannabis. So essentially, by limiting access to people, whether they want to use it for medical purposes or not, like someone said before, every use has benefits, so every use is medical. And obviously, no legal company and no one here is advocating for the use of children unless they need it for medical purposes, which we also have science-based research and even people in the community that have.
And that's time.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our final public comment is from John Botorff, and we're going to get him on the line here.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. You could start.
Awesome, thank you. My name is John Botorff, who plans for Kids.org. This is not about medical use, this is about recreational use. Cannabis smoke is a health hazard listed under Prop 65 as a carcinogen since 2009. Yet all the youth I have talked to are unaware of the health risks and actually believe recreational cannabis is good for them because that is how it is marketed. Multiple studies show that the recreational use of cannabis and THC in California has increased, and when cannabis retailers are within a 15-minute drive, there's an increased rate of prenatal cannabis use. THC can cause birth defects and other reproductive problems and increased cancer risk. THC and other chemicals during pregnancy can cause reduced birth weight, behavioral problems, and impaired learning abilities. THC easily goes through placenta barriers, and studies show cannabis is in fetal blood within 15 minutes of a mother's use. Research has also shown that cannabis and THC-containing products are being marketed directly at youth, especially to youth of color. Just like the tobacco industry, the goal of the cannabis industry is to create lifelong customers. The majority of the speakers tonight have a financial stake in cannabis. They talk about jobs and profits, not about addiction and the risk of birth defects. I personally know people addicted to cannabis and have seen the harms to their lives. Cannabis absolutely has medical benefits, but this is not what this is about. This is about a multi-billion-dollar industry attempting to make money at the expense of people's health. Please address the root causes of drug use instead of making it easier to use. If you want to help people address why they need to use drugs and why they feel the need to drink and do drugs, go after the underlying effects. Helping a multi-billion-dollar industry make more money is not the way to do it. Please do your duty and protect the youth and people of Oceanside and vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
And that concludes the public comment.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and come back to the council. Mr. Mullins, did you want to say something? I'm sorry, I saw you move. Okay. And for discussion and/or a motion, and I have, first up is Councilmember Rodriguez.
First, I want to thank the public that came and spoke. Very, very important that we get your opinions and your thoughts on this important topic, controversial but very important for the future of our city. I'm a father. I have seven children. Two are grown out of the house, five left. So youth access is near and dear to my heart, I think more than most on this dais. And the facts are that 75% of the movement of marijuana is done by the black market. If we, if you're in Carlsbad who doesn't have any cannabis ordinances, 75% plus is the black market. The only way we're going to combat the black market, the illegal bad actors that are lacing their products that who the heck knows what's in it and getting it to our kids, is to have the funding and the resources to set up operations with our police department, to help fund educational materials with our schools, including mentor programs. And we do not have those funds and resources now. We don't. That's a fact. This is near and dear to my heart. And my passion behind this is to prevent the black market from getting this product in the hands of our kids. Another dynamic that's very near and dear to my heart is there's some conflicting information between our federal government and our state legislator. This is a legal product in California, and it's up to local jurisdictions to regulate the best they see fit with their jurisdictions and their demographics. And we are moving in that direction, a very healthy direction as a city. And with that being said, we have to also understand that medical use, i.e. you have to get a medical card, and adult use, it's the same product they're buying. But the medical use dynamic requires you to pay a fee. And what a lot of individuals don't realize is, once you sign off on getting that medical card, because our federal government lists this as a substance, on Substance Schedule I, as a Schedule I substance, you give up your Second Amendment right to purchase and bear arms. So we have veterans, which in Oceanside have a large population of veterans, that would like to have a medical license because they're dealing with PTSD. I struggle with PTSD, two combat tours, Marine Corps. Thank you for coming to speak, Marine. And that Marine is faced with a very awkward situation that's going to violate his constitutional rights because he wants access to the medicine that he knows will help him, that I personally know veterans that this has helped, but has to also give up his constitutional right to bear arms. And that's unacceptable. So another reason I'm passionate about this is because I support the Second Amendment, the right to bear arms. And until our federal government gets their act together and removes this from the Substance Schedule I and puts it in a Schedule II where more research and more funding can come into play and we can get online, then we're going to have these dilemmas. And as a city, we have to come together and agree, we don't want this stuff, I don't think anyone on this dais wants this stuff in front of our kids. And the only way we're going to stop it is if we go after the bad guys, but we don't have the funding to do that right now. So I'm not going to say anymore on this topic, but I do want to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation and the elimination of the wording "medical use only." Thank you.
So there's a motion, no other lights? Deputy Mayor, kind?
You know, in March, I said the same thing I'm going to say tonight. I don't think this is the critical step in local regulation of marijuana. The small difference between recreational and medical, I think, is negligible. I think the next step is going to be storefronts and how we address that. But I am concerned with a lot of what I've heard tonight, and I've seen it last several council meetings ago. I said no to a manufacturing business I thought was clearly targeting their products towards children, advertising that. And as we go forward, though, the way I pictured our local regulation was going slowly and holding businesses responsible. And this isn't adding businesses, and I really don't think it's going to increase access. I could be wrong. I don't think it's going to increase access that much. But before we go further, we need to have a very comprehensive analysis of what the last year or six months looked like and see, are we, are minors getting the product? What are the challenges? And what do we need to tailor our next regulations to? And how do we make sure that's as safe as possible? And I think that will be the big challenge. So again, this is not, I don't think this is the critical decision in local regulation. But as we get forward, we need to see what we're doing well and what we're not. And that's why we took this incremental approach where it was a limited number of businesses, it was recreation, or it was medical first. But I think this will give us a chance to really analyze how we're regulating marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to say a few words here. There were over 40 people who spoke this evening. Those who were against were, most of the concerns had to do with creating more access to youth. Most that were against, I mean, most that were for, a vote of yes to eliminate the restriction from just medical to, and then therefore allow adult use. Over half actually spoke in, actually in favor of medical and medicinal and access for that purpose. In fact, most who spoke as veterans, who actually spoke because they felt it was helping them in terms of addressing some kind of medical condition. And that is not what we're here tonight to address. We're not here tonight to address whether it's legal or illegal. That has already been answered by the state. So it's legal. It's not, we're not here trying to criminalize cannabis, marijuana. I am persuaded by some of the youth who spoke this evening, who I have been hearing from, a couple of them I recognized over the years. And I am concerned about greater access to youth. What I am really concerned about is that it's not just an incremental, although I think that's an argument that could be made, that little by little, we're getting there, and we're not doing anything to address youth access. We're just changing the laws. When we made a strong statement, and it was a different council, but that council did make a strong statement about restricting it for medical purposes, making sure that there was access. There is no equity here. There are no programs, and when you change this to adult use, you are saying, okay, we're, you know, we know that this is going to get to our youth. There's going to be marketing, there's going to be increased use, increased access, and of course, it's going to get to our kids. There's nothing here about educational programming. There's nothing here about counseling programs. There's nothing here about equity, an equity program to give back to the communities who have traditionally been criminalized, which are communities of color. Nothing here. What I'm hearing is, okay, later on, you know, we can do that later on. Well, we can't afford that, to wait. We will be losing kids to something that unfortunately, especially when you're, at that young age, unfortunately, it's something that is difficult to get off of. And why should we be exposing our youth to this? If, in fact, we want to do this, we should do it responsibly, and we should have the programming that Vista Community Clinic has been talking about. But I'm not hearing that from the dais. I really, really believe that unless we have this with this, I can't support it, and we ought not to support it. I think this is not thoughtful. Obviously, this is going to be a big impact for our youth, and I just can't support, as this is, I can't support this. Thank you. And Councilmember Johnson?
Well, I think I agree with Mayor Sanchez regarding prevention, community support. It's imperative that we keep marijuana out of the hands of our children. I mean, it's well-known fact that THC has a detrimental effect on a developing brain. So prevention is where we need to be the most effective. And if the marijuana tax revenue can allocate funds for awareness and education in schools and starting with prevention, the treatment models that work all indicate that we need to start with prevention, and we need to start really young, because that's what's effective, that's what works. And I think it's really important that we allocate, you know, a good portion of the revenue to our schools, to law enforcement, to wherever we can enact prevention. And I think that without the funds from this industry, there are no funds for prevention. I haven't seen any budget items around this. So I support this as long as we can fund prevention.
Councilmember Weiss?
We've come a long way from when, a number of years ago, when there was a different council, looking at having a community committee that got put together and how we got here. But personally, I don't believe that this is going to create any greater access. I have absolutely no problem in having, and I see the chief back there, that as this advances, that we do set up sting operations, that we do work with North County Prevention Coalition to set up buys from some of the illicit deliveries that are out there. It's interesting because I went to one of those websites and it showed all the different deliveries that are occurring in Oceanside, and most of them are from non-licensed deliveries from outside of the city. So I have no problem going after the bad apples, whether it's the deliveries coming in or the illicit market that's getting the drugs to the hands of our youth. I'm actually more concerned about the methadone clinics that we have in Oceanside that no one seems to care about. To me, there are, they are a much bigger public concern than providing adult use for cannabis. So having said that, I will second the motion.
Deputy Mayor, kind?
I have several concerns from some things I just heard. You know, in March, we, I forget the vote, but majority of us directed this to come back to staff. Between March and June, what was told to staff, was there any suggestions or leadership saying, I want this prevention program, I want this, I want that? And now, at the dais, we say no, even though we supported this four months earlier. And I'd like, you know, if there's some things, those are just as important to me. And if there's some things that we can do and partner on and partner for prevention for protecting our children, then I'd. for protecting our children, then I'd like to hear them and move forward with those. But I haven't heard those yet, and that's important. So do you have any suggestions or leadership on how we can do that and make sure children stay safe? Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Keim, you are directing, I think, your comments to me. I did bring those issues up last time and did vote against because it was not included. It was a direction to staff to come back, and I did make those comments. It was, again, not included. But if there is direction to staff, there is going to be a vote here. And I'm not sure which way it's going to go, but if we could give direction to staff to come back with programs for regarding, what did I say, counseling, education, and also equity. It's something that we need to address. Most cities are doing all of that at the same time that they are passing laws to make accessible via dispensaries, et cetera. We haven't done that. So if you support that, I think staff listening to that can come back at a later time to bring that forward.
And the reason I make these comments...
Are you supporting that? Are you going to be able to request that from staff?
Absolutely.
And am I hearing the same thing from Councilmember Jensen? So staff, you hear three people redirecting you. I mean, I don't know what, we're going to vote right now, but regardless of the vote, this is very critical, I think. We keep hearing from our youth, we haven't heard any youth come in and say, oh, don't worry, I'm fine, you know, please support this. And that, I mean, you know, as someone who grew up here in one of the poverty neighborhoods where anybody could get it, and, you know, it's like, where is the help? If government is saying, we're going to give, we're going to, you know, allow this recreational use, and everyone's going to, you know, have access to it, what about the youth? That is our concern. That is the public health and safety issue, not for adults. Adults can do whatever you want, but I'm talking about our youth. So Councilmember Rodriguez, do you want to make some other comments?
Yes. Yeah, I appreciate us bringing a little attention to the mayor's back-and-forth comments because I agree. I think she goes back and forth, and I'm glad we brought attention to that. If I can have staff come up really quick in reference to the issuance, if this hypothetically passes tonight, a business is going to come to staff and they got to, what sort of administrative mechanism do they need to do to be able to start now distributing to adults? By the way, over the age of 21 versus 18, which is how medical is set up. Go ahead, though.
Councilmember Rodriguez, councilmembers. In order for one of our existing facilities that has been approved for operations to add adult use, or even for our, I'll go to that in a second, for our approved facilities, they would need to submit a substantial conformity application to the planning division for review in order to modify their regulated use permit that was approved by the city council. They would also need to modify their local license and/or update it. And that would include providing additional materials that may have been affected with the introduction of adult use into the operation. At this time, staff doesn't believe that our manufacturing or distribution facilities will have a lot of operational changes because those facilities were designed to meet state standards, and the state does not tell the difference between medical and adult use. Our retail, our non-storefronts might have some additional employee training or more employing, hiring, things like that, in order to address the adult activities that will be going on the site. And so those will have to be provided to city staff for review.
Can you elaborate on the community benefits plan? And is that revisited?
So the community benefits was a portion that was required as part of the original licensing that was submitted back in 2018 for most of these facilities. At this time, staff is not reviewing those community plans until the local license renewal of operating facilities. So at that time, we'll be asking the facilities to provide detailed information of if they are completing the community plans that they said they were going to do back in 2018, and if not, why not, or how they're going to change them. A lot of these facilities propose things like donating funds. By a certain year, some of those facilities are not operating. So we do expect that there's changes, modifications to the community plans, but facilities will be required to have done some sort of community benefit as stated in their original license.
Thank you. All right. So with that being said, we've made it absolutely clear to staff over several meetings how important it is to do sting operations. I encourage the public, watch the past videos. We've made it very, very clear. Look, here's what we need to do. Our police chief even said, look, we don't have the funding to do these things right now. So we're talking about something we want to do, but we don't have the funding for. Well, unfortunately, that's not how the world works. So none of us want this in front of our kids, but we need the funding to do so. We've made it very clear. City manager, make it happen. Police chief, make it happen. As the funding starts coming in, we need these mechanisms in play to go after the bad actors and to protect our youth from getting it in their hands. And everybody on this dais agrees with that, except for one who goes back and forth. So there's a motion in a second, and let's vote.
Sorry. Let me be the mayor now, okay? Deputy Mayor Keim.
And my goal with my comments wasn't to divide the council. It's just, it's important to me to clarify when I hear comments that insinuate that if we approve this change tonight, that we don't care about children. For me, it's absolutely not the case. I'm the lone council member that voted against one of our recent applications for manufacturing because I've thoroughly reviewed social media, and I just did not think it was appropriate. I think there's a correct way to go about this. But I want us to come together for good public policy instead of political theater, and I think we're doing that now. But that's critical. I think, just to make it crystal clear, we all care about kids and not having access. And I'd like us to be united in going forward that way. Thank you.
Right. And to give further direction to staff, I mean, we're talking about education, outreach, counseling. These are not community benefits that will be able to be provided by businesses. I mean, whatever it is, I heard cleanup, and I heard some other things, very, very positive things, right? But they're not related to this, to youth access. And I think that is the critical, you know, nexus here, that and also equity issues with respect to criminalizing those because of the laws, the change in laws. So I do want to see staff work with, I'm sorry, I keep saying Vista Community Clinic, but it's...
North Coast.
North County Preventative Coalition, my apologies. So because they've been around and they know, they have a relationship with the kids, there are clubs at the schools, at the high schools, and this needs to be something that, you know, they're at the table. The kids are at the table, the counseling programs are at the table, education. So this is what I think would be more productive than telling a business, yeah, go, you know, tell us what, do good things you would like to do. You know, how do you tell someone, a business, go do counseling? Offer counseling? I mean, you know, why would you do that? You know, I would rather see these businesses actually contribute toward a fund to be able to have those counseling programs available. All right, there is a motion in a second.
And I'll need to title, mayor, sorry. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside, California, amending Oceanside zoning ordinance, Articles 4, 4A, 12, 13, and 36, and Chapter 7 of the Oceanside City Code by the amendment of Article 13 regarding cannabis facilities. The "and" at the conclusion of that heading should be stricken.
Motion approved, 401. Sanchez, no.
Make me a believer. All right. That is the last item for this evening. We didn't have anyone else, right, for public comment? We lost someone.
For off agenda, Dirk Akema.
Is he still on?
Is Dirk Akema? Yeah, he's still on.
Okay, let's hear him, and then we'll...
Okay.
Sorry.
All right.
Almost there.
All right. Dirk, are you there?
We still have a meeting, so if you could be... We're still meeting, please.
Dirk, you could go. You're unmuted. You need to unmute yourself, Dirk.
How's that?
Perfect. You could go.
Good. Good evening, city council members. Dirk Akema, 30-year resident and state of Oceanside, Sand member. We're excited about the sand study that's going to be released here soon, at the end of the month. Want to thank Kyle Kroger, and then GHD, and Brian Leslie for doing a lot of work on that. It's very exciting for not only us, but for the entire city to see what possibilities could exist to restore our beaches. In the meantime, our group, SOS Oceanside, is setting up shop down under the pier on Saturdays, and we're engaging the public in education on what has happened and what we can do to restore our beaches. Specifically, what has happened is that we've had our rivers dammed, and we've had sand mining going on in the rivers that lead to the beaches. We've had the harbor built, and then we have coastal currents that sweep sand off in a very natural fashion. So, you know, the city has embarked on this sand study to determine what type of scientific solutions we can adhere to to restore what the man-made problem that we actually have. And so we're also educating the public as we are down there under the pier on Saturdays about what we can do. Sand retention, sand replenishment, sand bypass, we could install jetties, we could look at a submerged breakwater, there's all kinds of options. So it's something that we're seeking the right scientific solutions so that hopefully the city can embark on a proper strategy to help our ailing beaches, especially critical at this time where tourism has really increased here in Oceanside, and there's so much excitement with the new hotels and development that's going on downtown. So while we are down at the beach, I want to just show a couple of things. We have these photos that we're displaying to people that come by. You can see right now here where, how the beach in Oceanside was in 1940 and how it is now. This picture was taken in 2019, and see how the beach has suffered in decline since then. And then, as an example, we're showing what has happened in Newport Beach. You can see in 1934, they were actually losing houses to the ocean. And then in 1968, they built these series of groynes. And here's a recent picture in 2019, see how their beaches have been restored. So we're suggesting these as possible options for the city of Oceanside, and it's very exciting. And I got to tell you, all the people that we're talking to down under the beach, they're all so excited.
It's time.
That's time. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting to Wednesday, June 16, 3:30 for closed session, to begin again at 5 o'clock on the 16th. Please note that the city council will not be meeting in July at all. The meeting after the 16th of June will be August 4th. All right, thank you very much. Good evening.